Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. The tellers have informed me that a quorum is present, so the meeting will please come to order. We're starting now, please, so could you please take your seats and stop your conversations? Thank you. The return of the warrant by the town constable shows that the warrant was properly conserved, so the meeting is properly constituted. We'll begin tonight, as we do every one of our town meetings, with a pledge of allegiance. May I ask you to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America. The republic riches stands, one nation, for God indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you. It's a tradition at our annual town meeting to have a moment of silence for citizens who have served the town during their lives in various capacities and who have died during the past year. I'll read their names, and then I'll ask you to please join me in a moment of silence for them. Bruce Pratt, Carolyn Queenen, John Muncie, Bill Weeks, Jane Russell, Ann Evans, William Signorelli, Helen Mulhern, Margaret Lee, Nancy Noonan, John Bryant, James Carpenter, Michael Petrolia, Russ Benetti. Please join me in a moment of silence for our citizens who have served the town so well. Thank you. I'll start with introductions. My name is Dan Evans. I'm your town moderator. Up here at the front of the room, to my left and your right, is our select board, Gene Healy Chair, Paul Grady Vice Chair, Jack Creighton, Ellen Maher, Chris Plex. Our town manager is running late, but when he arrives, it's Chris Senior, he'll be sitting up there. Assistant Town Manager Michelle Leary is at that table, and Town Council Carolyn Murray. Behind me, at the front left of the room, is our advisory board, Gene Astino Chair, Mary McGoldrick Vice Chair, Mike Barkley, Fran Collins, Rob Hillman, Mark Maggie, Meg Wheeler. Town Clerk here at this table, and our Assistant Town Clerk Lisa Legay and Beth Anderson. Tellers back behind advisory will count votes if we need them to by hand, Bette Baker, Skay Faulkner, Susan Hobson, Jane King, and Debbie Leggett. We have a policy with name tags for people who are not registered voters, so this non-voting section is reserved for people who came in the room and did not receive one of the little voter cards. They are not voters, everyone else is permitted to vote, so if you're, unless you're a town employee sitting with your group, if you're a non-voter, please sit in this section up Each of you should have ideally three different packets of paper. One of them is the town warrant printed on this newsprint paper that was mailed to you in advance of the meeting and also available as you came in. Second is the proposed motions. Those two interrelate in that the warrant provides notice of the matters to be acted on at the meeting. The proposed motions provides the language that is actually proposed to be the operative language discussed at the meeting. So for speed, rather than having that read each article, you'll hear me say at the very beginning and probably fairly quickly, "May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting?" Then somebody's going to say "moved," and somebody's going to say "second." What that has done is it's made a motion using the language that's printed in the stapled packet that says "Town Manager's Proposed Motion." So that is the actual operative language that you should be referring to during the course of the discussion, because that is the motion that will be made and that will commence our discussion on each article. The third packet is a much fatter one, that is copies of various slides related to the various zoning articles that are being proposed. Those will be described to you at relevant points in the discussion of the zoning articles. We will vote, as we always do, by voice vote unless I'm uncertain on calling the voice vote or seven voters indicate that they doubt my count by standing. If it's necessary to vote with a hand ballot, we have the tellers in the front of them who will take their stations, and then you will vote by holding this orange piece of paper up in the air. So please keep that handy so that you can use it to vote if we need to use a hand vote. If you'd like to speak on a motion, please move to one of these microphones to be recognized. Once recognized, please begin by giving your name and street address. As always, we need to keep the debate concise and to the point. All the debate must be courteous and respectful. Brevity is both courteous and effective. Sarcasm is never appropriate. Generally, it should not be necessary to refer to specific individuals involved in the debate, but if you need to, in order for clarification, to refer to specific remarks or something, please do so when you're using somebody's name with the utmost respect. Speakers are limited to five minutes unless it's been arranged with me in advance. If you at any point have a question about the procedure or conduct of the meeting, including a concern that I may have done something incorrectly, you should seek to be recognized, let me know that you have a point of order, and then state your question or concern. One of the votes, procedural votes that is used in this town and others, is a motion for the previous question. It brings an immediate vote on the pending motion, so it basically ceases debate. Once a motion for the previous question has been made, we will proceed immediately to that. It may not be debated, requires two-thirds vote for adoption, so two-thirds vote to stop debate. I will only allow that after both sides have had a fair opportunity to be heard. If I've already recognized some potential speakers, I may allow them to speak before recognizing a motion for the previous question. Adjournment or timing, I think we can power through this evening, so currently there are no plans for an adjourned meeting. We do have quite a bit to do, including seven zoning articles, another bylaw article, and two citizens petitions, but I have every hope that with focus and efficiency, we can power through and get us all home at a reasonable hour, having conducted the full business of the meeting. Any questions before we start? Great, thank you. We'll move to Article One, Recognizing the Citizens and Employees for Particular Service to the Town. The motion here is that the recognition of the named citizens and employees be accepted and placed in the permanent records of the town. Mary Quill, Town Assessor; Mary Goodwin, Town Nurse; Nancy LaFose, Director of Elder Affairs; Sergeant Garrett Hunt, Cohasset Police Department. May I have a motion in that form? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion was adopted unanimously. Article Two, Annual Town Reports. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Great, requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion on Article Two, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Three, Reports of the Various Committees. I believe we only have one committee giving a report, the OPEB Committee. I'll recognize Mr. Tim Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's actually the PEB Committee, Post-Employment Benefits Committee, which I first would like to thank the Cohasset Select Board and the community for supporting the PEB Committee and the proposals that we have been making over the years. The main purpose that we have is to bring the OPEB unfunded liability, and just as an aside, that is primarily the money that we as a town are obligated to pay to our employees upon retirement for their medical insurance. That unfunded liability grew in 2020 to over $70 million. $70 million, and that was impacting our ability to borrow money as well as having a unfunded liability. I can tell you with the plan that was accepted by a previous select board and has been supported by this select board in the town, the unfunded liability this year is now just over $26 million. We have a plan in place which will bring that to zero in 2032 if we continue to follow that policy, and the primary benefit to us as a community is that it contributes to the AAA bond rating that we have, so that when we borrow money, we borrow at the best possible rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the report of the PEB Committee? Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Four, Our Operating Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption.
Good evening. I'm just going to give a quick presentation on the FY25 budget. I'd like to thank all of those involved in preparing this budget, including Cohasset's elected leadership committee members and staff. As we build the budget, we start with a solid foundation. We have our AAA credit rating, we've had that for approximately 10 years, affirmed by the S&amp;P, where very strong management and comprehensive financial policies and practices is what gains us as AAA rating. We've had our annual comprehensive financial report, this is the 11th year we've won the award. If you'd like to learn more about the town's finances, the CAFER can be found online. More than $1.2 million in grants, including $433,000 in a regional health grant. What this does is it funds three towns, it's a public health grant for three towns, it funds regional social work, public health nurse, community outreach staff, as well as training and public education programs. We also were awarded $450,000 for coastal resiliency. This fund plans flood mitigation programs around Cohasset Cove and the Cohasset Wastewater Treatment Plant. We were awarded $185,000 in additional planning grants, which aids in compliance with the MBTA zoning law. $55,000 in cybersecurity grants, and recently $220,000 in a municipal fiber grant, which will allow us to run fiber to the new Public Safety Building at 135 King Street. So for FY25, we're supporting our capital investments. We have our recreation projects, the CPC funded $2 million of the Beechwood Playground and Basketball Court renovation, the Bancroft Tennis Courts, as well as a sports wallet Sawyer Street. We have roads and sidewalk improvements, there was a specialist purpose stabilization fund created, and the Roads and Sidewalks Committee, along with Brian Joyce, have identified the needs and have begun steadily in work to improve our infrastructure. Design work for the Public Safety Building at 135 King Street is ongoing. There was a $10.4 million allocation, of which $2.4 million was to purchase the property, which was done in April, and we are now in the process of hiring an owner's project manager to get the project kicked off. There will also be renovations to the Elm Street Firehouse within this proposal. Repairs to school buildings and grounds, a specialist purpose stabilization fund was created, and projects have been identified, including designed to repair the middle high school fire alarm system, as well as retiring classrooms at the Deer Hill School. We maintain strong financial position through reporting policies and planning. As for revenue, as you can see, 84% of the revenue is our largest source, and it comes from property taxes, which is 93% collected from residential properties. And then we have 7% local receipts and a 7% state aid. And then as far as expenses, as you can see, the schools account for 51% of that operating budget, and the other largest piece is 24%, which is pensions, healthcare benefits...
Michelle, I think you want to change the slide.
Oh, sorry. There we go. So 24% accounts for pension, healthcare benefits, and then you can see 2s and 3s for health and welfare, culture and recreation, debt service, and other items. We just want to keep our focus on Cohasset, and here are some of the projects that are ongoing that we spoke of early in the presentation, which are new roads, the Public Safety Building at 135 King Street, investments in our schools, and our fields and courts. So that's a brief synopsis of the FY25 budget and what goes into it.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval of the budget on Article Four by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero, and the School Committee has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Is there discussion? Yes, Ms. Jenkins.
Good evening. I'm Leonora Jenkins, one of your Water Commissioners. Some of you may remember me as a member of the Cohasset Concerned Taxpayers, a group active in promoting prudent government management and spending. 19 years ago, I came before the town meeting to present two citizens petitions to add a new Section Seven to the town finance bylaws. These required the accurate monthly status reports of light items in all town budgets, including month-to-date and year-to-date figures. All of this information is supposed to be available to the public. With the turmoil in the last few years in the Finance Department, we have not been receiving these required reports that our ratepayers have been paying for, and at our May 21st meeting, we were informed that we would only be receiving quarterly reports, being an enterprise fund that is inadequate for our needs or state requirements. On May 30th, we received the March 31st third quarter report. Now, one question that I'm always asked is, "What about the $185 on the water bills?" Well, the town employees have control over all of our funds. Since the $30.5 million loans were taken out years ago, and some of you sitting here remember that, they have been refinanced, some of them three times, extending them to end in 2032, causing us to still have over $10.5 million to repay in principal alone. Over 38% of our current budget is for debt service. We discovered last August that four years ago, projects voted at the 2020 town meeting were never funded, which caused the next employee who took over to go out for bands without informing us, and the bands came in 11% interest, they have just been paid off, but this town meeting voted in 2020 to take the money from retained earnings. Our auditors recommended in a management letter that reconciliation be conducted for indirect costs. Our employees have denied this is necessary, even though, you know, through the years, I've found the ratepayers paid for nine months of health insurance for a deceased person, $90,544 for an employee that didn't exist, there were math errors, work not performed, et cetera. We have persisted to have these issues resolved and have gotten some success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote under the motion under Article Four. Again, it does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion on Article Four, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Five, Unpaid Bills from Previous Years. I'm told there aren't any, so may I have a motion that this article be indefinitely postponed? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. All those require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Six, Supplemental Appropriations for Fiscal 2024. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, it requires majority vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize our Assistant Town Manager, Michelle Leary. Nope, I'll recognize our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
Thank you. There's three. The first is the traditional move of money to the 143 account that we collect. The money, the number's a little different than you saw in your warrant, it's up to 111,000, because that's the entire amount we've collected since the last town meeting. And the other two are supplemental appropriations for legal expenses and police overtime. Hopefully, the police overtime will be corrected by the additional officer that was just approved in the budget.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Motion does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Six, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Seven, Stabilization and Other Special Funds. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. Again, our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
There are two transfers, both following existing policies. The transfer to the OPEB fund continues the town's longstanding commitment to funding the OPEB accounts. The transfer to capital stabilization includes an extra $100,000 this year, which has been the request of the Select Board and the Capital Budget Committee to meet the increasing costs of the capital plan.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Motion under Article Seven, all those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. We'll proceed to Article Eight, Capital Improvements Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires two-thirds vote for adoption. Before recognizing the Chair of the Capital Budget, I'll point out, as many of you know, there has been some discussion about whether some additional articles should be included for funding in relation to some of these items. Those articles are now the subject of the Citizens Petition, which is Article 25. As I understand it, the petitioners are in favor of all of the dollar amounts and all of the items that are in Article Eight. So to keep the discussion clean, I am not going to permit any discussion under Article Eight of items that are not in here and that are covered by Article 25. So Article Eight is going to be a very clean discussion about the items in Article Eight. Obviously, if anyone wants to ask any questions about the items that are in Article Eight or speak against, and if the item's in Article Eight, you're welcome to do that. But to keep the discussion clean, any of the stuff that is not in Article Eight that is covered in Article 25, we're going to discuss when we get to Article 25. With that said, I will recognize the Chair of the Capital Budget Committee, Brian Host.
Good evening. In Article Eight, the total capital improvements budget is a whopping $4,120,541, which is a really large number, and we should all be very proud that we're reinvesting in the assets of our town as needed. But this is not just regular way capital stabilization, this includes multiple different buckets, so I'll try to make this as simple as I can. First, there are the enterprise funds, water and sewer. These are fundamentally separate financial organizations that fund their operations as well as their borrowings, based on the revenues that they collect in your water and sewer fees. So we'll start with those, and then we'll move on to the regular way capital stabilization fund appropriations, and then last, I'll hit the special purpose stabilization funds, which we set up at Special Town Meeting last year, which include both the schools' capital stabilization fund as well as roads and sidewalks. So let's start with the enterprise funds. These are, two of these items, the first and the last, are funded out of retained earnings, and then the middle one, the $500,000, I just want to highlight because that is the only item on this entire article that is debt financed, and that is, again, enterprise fund debt. It will be repaid by the sewer department based on the revenues that they collect on their fees. So it's not a new tax, it's not excluded debt, you're not going to see it other than it's actually in your bill. Moving on to the general fund, I'm going to skip by the large, a large number of these items and just simply say that these represent an extremely wide range of needs from across all the departments in town, including the schools. And I'll move straight down to a couple of larger items. When we look at item number 14, I just want to highlight, this is the second year of electronic whiteboards or projectors that are being rolled out to the schools. Each one of those investments is going to be roughly a quarter of a million dollars. Last year, we did the middle school, this year, we did the high school. We anticipate that we'll continue with that program and finish out with Deer Hill and Osgood in the forthcoming years. So that's a long-term investment in upgrading the technology and interactive learning experience in our classrooms. Moving down to number 20, you see an HVAC system for the Elder Affairs Building. This was a very, not only a very large number, but an unexpected number, and the good news is that based on the steps that we've taken to create additional funding sources, as well as the prudence we've executed, we actually have the funding to write a $500,000 check to replace the HVAC system in this building without coming to you for a new debt authorization. Moving on, I want to highlight item number 17 in conjunction with 24 and 25. These three items, the roof, as well as the accessibility study, as well as the fire suppression alarm study, are all fundamentally being funded out of the $500,000 appropriation out of free cash that you all approved as an investment in our town hall Special Town Meeting last fall. So that money is now being put to use on our priorities. Moving on to number 21, 22, and 23, so 21 is the roads and sidewalks, it's being funded out of the new special purpose stabilization fund that was created at last STM, and 22, 23 are investments in the schools' facilities that are being funded out of that special purpose stabilization fund. And I must say, you know, we created a very large funding vehicle there, and with that obviously comes an eagerness to find ways to spend it, but we all need to remember that the single most important thing we're going to need to fund out of that are the roofs on each of our buildings, and they are coming at us very quickly. So these items simply couldn't wait, we're funding them, but the majority of that funding source is earmarked and dedicated towards the roofs going forward. That's it for my comments.
Thank you. The Select Board, the Advisory Committee, the Water Commission on the water items, and the Sewer Commission on the sewer items have all recommended in favor of the items under Article Eight. They discuss them at various meetings, so the votes don't, are not identical. To save me and you the trouble of me reading them all, I would direct you to the motion packet for the enumeration of the specific vote counts on each of the recommendations, but it is a vote to recommend approval on all of them. Is there any discussion?
Virginia Brophy, 16 Beechwood Street. I just have a question, and I'm sorry I haven't been involved in any of the hearings, but relative to the electric bus versus the diesel bus, I would ask, how long is the lease period, and why would we be at this juncture leasing diesel buses? Why aren't we, why is there only one electric lease and there are eight or nine of the eight diesel ones? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Host?
So first, let me explain the number for the electric bus. It's actually not 7,000 per year. We funded the electric bus, I think, a year ago, and then it took three quarters of a year to get it, so there's three quarters of a year worth of funding still sitting there from last year's appropriation. The new $7,000 appropriation is just cover one quarter of a year, because we have cash sitting there to cover the other three quarters. So electric buses are not a deal, just to be clear. In fact, they're, this one that we were able to, we, it was the Alt Energy Committee, through their valiant efforts, were able to acquire, is extraordinarily subsidized by the vendor because they want a test case, and we only took one because only one was offered, and frankly, we want a test case. It would be a little risky to simply leave all of our diesel buses behind and jump straight over to electric until we're confident they will actually serve our purposes and perform at least as well. So hopefully this works out, and there are more electric buses in the future.
Thank you. Is there... Is there other discussion? Sir? Could you please speak to a microphone, move to a microphone, and give your name and street address, please?
Hi, Charlie DeSantis, Forest Avenue. I have a question on what would be the total lease for one EV bus for an entire year?
At some point, I'm going to defer to Tanya, who I'm sure is here somewhere, but this one bus is $25,000 per year. And again, that's extraordinarily subsidized. If we were to go out into the market and try and replicate that for a fleet of eight or nine buses, it's an impossibility that we would see that number. It would be a larger number. So hopefully, the pricing comes down as these become commercially adopted.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote under Article Eight, it does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Eight, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Sorry, let me ask again. If you say nay, please say it loudly so that I can hear that there's some dissenting votes. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Nine, Allocation of Funds for One-Time Cost. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. I'll recognize our town manager, Chris Senior.
So these span the gamut, and I'll walk them quickly. There's been a lot of investment in capital and infrastructure, and in order to make sure that we're supporting those projects properly, we need a little more project management's resources. At this point, this is just going to fund contracted services. If we feel we need a full-time person for a period of time, we'll go in that direction. Brian Joyce can only be pulled in so many directions, and Michelle as well. Increased funding for the Reserve Fund is something that the Advisory Committee and the Select Board both sought, and that allows more money to be available for emergency purposes. The school department, like districts all across Massachusetts, faced an extraordinary increase in special education costs this year because the cost for the special education providers jumped a lot. This will cover the expected max gap for the '25 budget, and hopefully, that number will come down, and any money that's not spent will just roll into the future for free cash. Cemetery maintenance, that's money that's coming out of the sale of Graves Fund, so it's coming right out for the purpose to maintain the cemetery. The asset management grant, we're going to get back two-thirds of that, the sewer department, and that will be a full assessment of their assets and create a whole package for future capital planning. There's a small repair that has been done at Deer Hill, and a very old sewer line failed, and it knocked out a bathroom, and the best time to get that done will be this summer, so that funding will cover that. And the last one is just money that we got for a tree fine, and it seemed the most appropriate place to eventually put it. We couldn't do it without going through town meeting, would be to put into the Tree Bank Revolving Fund, which will allow it to be used for trees. There were a couple of trees illegally removed, and that's what the fine was for.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jenkins?
Maybe I didn't, Lee Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. Quick question on the sewer, the fund sewer repairs for the Deer Hill School. It's going to be funded by free cash?
Yes.
Why doesn't that come out of the school funds?
This is an appropriate repair, it's an unusual repair. We have to bring in an outside contractor, and, you know...
We gave him a million and a half dollars.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The motion under Article Nine does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, Departmental Revolving Funds, Annual Spending Limits. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, does require majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize again our town manager, Chris Senior.
This is just an annual article. It requires us to re-adopt an amount. These numbers are the exact same as they were last year, and they're just a cap. We rarely touch that actual amount, but allows the funds to operate. And the money that comes in goes back to paying for the services or similar services in those departments.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, the Advisory Committee recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, again, majority vote for adoption. Under Article Ten, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Eleven, Creation of Revolving Fund for Library Programs and Specialized Inspections. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. Our town manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
These are two new funds to add to the ones that were just reauthorized for spending limits in Article Ten. The libraries historically never charge for programs. They've actually done a very successful passport program, so if anybody needs to renew their passport, you can go very quickly through the library. They make a little money, and they like to keep it in the library to pay for additional library programs, so this is, this will allow that to happen. And after some review, it made sense, since we typically contract externally for specialized inspections like electrical, or plumbing, or gas failure, we have someone on a per diem, and we charge the fee for it. This will allow the fees to go into the fund and then pay for the service, the specialized service.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote under Article Eleven, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Proceed to Article Twelve, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Ninety-One, Liability. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager, Chris Senior.
This is another annual article that's required if we ever do any work in the waterfront areas, like the Park Grab Boat Ramp. This allows us to do work on the seawalls and other routine repairs that we do. And again, it's required for us to do any work in the sea-fronting areas along the town.
Thank you. Again, the Select Board and the Advisory Committee have both recommended approval by votes of five to zero and eight to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll go to a voice vote under Article Twelve, requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Thirteen, Annual Real Estate Exemptions, Annual Renewal. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. Our town manager, Chris Senior.
Again, another annual renewal. This renews various exemptions for those who meet certain requirements for income and for age and for veteran status, and it just renews those exemptions that have been in place for a number of years.
Thank you. Again, the Select Board has recommended approval, as has the Advisory Committee, by respective votes of five to zero and eight to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll go to a voice vote. Motion under Article Thirteen requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Fourteen, Property Tax Deferral for Seniors. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. Our town manager, Chris Senior.
So this is an expansion of the eligibility that the Board of Assessors has voted for unanimously and recommended, which would allow the income for those who want to defer their taxes to rise from $51,000 to $69,000, and that's the max that's allowed under Mass law. When you defer your taxes, the interest runs. It's typically when someone's kind of near the end of their ownership run, or they're in the process of a sale or something. But it allows the taxes to still be collected after the fact with an interest rate, but this will allow a few more people to participate if they'd like to.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero, and the Board of Assessors has recommended approval by a vote of three to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll move to a voice vote. Motion under Article Fourteen does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen, Community Preservation Committee. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, does require majority vote for adoption. For the Community Preservation Committee, I'll recognize Mr. Tom Riordan.
Thank you. The Community Preservation Committee has voted to recommend to the town meeting five projects and one grant extension. The total of these projects is $206,692.46. The projects are, first, $100,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Account for a pavilion at the Paul Pratt Library. These funds will be added to a grant of $125,000, which was voted by the town last year. The funds will be used to construct a pavilion, amphitheater, and lodge patio on the Sawyer Street side of the library property. These facilities will allow an expansion of the programmatic activities, including lectures and meetings. The total cost of the project is $650,000. The difference will be made up by library fundraising. The second project is $10,000 from the Historic Preservation Account to fund an HVAC unit at the Cohasset Historical Society's Main Street Headquarters. The full cost of the replacement is $13,750. The unit is needed to provide adequate climate control to preserve collections. The difference will be paid from Historical Society's resources. The third project is $12,829.46 from the Historic Preservation Account to the Cohasset Historical Society to digitize parts of the society's 32,000-item collection. This is a continuing project, which is providing proper archival storage for these collections. The fourth project is $8,863 from the Open Space and Recreation Account to install a hydration station at Barnes Field. This is part of a broad effort by the Open Space and Recreation Committee, working with various town departments and agencies to establish a network of hydration stations across the town. And the final project, $75,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Accounts to Cohasset Elder Affairs to build a pergola at Willcut Commons. That will expand provided additional programming and recreational activities for seniors and other community members, and it will also provide greater facilities and use of open space at the center. Now, in addition to those five projects, we are recommending that the CPC extend a grant of $450,000, which was voted by the town in 2021, to the Conservation Trust to purchase a permanent conservation restriction at 487 King Street. 487 King Street is probably 1,000 yards from Beechwood Street. This is needed because the implementation of this grant earlier, we generally like to have these grants worked on and completed within a three-year timeframe. And this has been delayed because of state inaction that was cut back because of reduction in staff in the office. So that, the Conservation Trust believes has been corrected now and should be fine to go forward with a one-year extension, so we're recommending that. And just before I subside and release the floor, I want to urge, from time to time, I'm asked, how does the CPC work? And I'd just like to recommend that if you have a little time to take a look at the town website and the CPC page there, all of the materials have been revised and changed and improved. They're expanded, and there is now a handbook, which describes in detail all of the policies and procedures of the CPC, as well as the background on the Community Preservation Act, which is a state legislation that started the ball rolling on CPC. So I think it can answer a lot of your questions. And I'd just like to take a moment to really commend three people on this committee that worked tirelessly on this project. So Ginny Najim and Jennifer Dial and Mary Ann Wetherall did superb work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero for projects four and five, and seven zero with one extension for projects, one abstention, excuse me, for projects one, two, and three. Is there discussion? Ms. Jenkins?
Januar Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. Just have a question about the hydration station. Is that metered water?
I'm afraid you're above my category to answer that question. Do we have somebody from the Open Space Committee? There?
My people answer that. Vince Thornton, Nichols Road, I'm part of the CYBSA board where the hydration system's going to go. That is town water, so it is metered.
Okay, just, we had a question about that, so we have someone who is paying for the water, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Craig McClellan, I reside at Eight Rustic Drive. Thank you for the summary. I had a question regarding the 487 King Street permanent restriction. How large is that parcel, and why do we feel that it needs to be permanently restricted? What would be the value of doing that?
Again, I would yield to somebody from the Conservation Trust, if they are here, that this is a vote that was taken in 2021. This action is simply to extend that approval, which the town has already granted. Now, that's not to avoid your question, but I don't have the direct answer. But this is not to begin this process again, this is just to extend for a year, which is not an uncommon practice, but we try to get these projects done within three years. Is there anybody from the Conservation Trust that... Nope, well...
Okay. Any, is there further discussion? Sir? Are you responding to that question, or...
Yes, I'm responding to the question.
Okay.
I'm Jeff Wall from the Conservation Trust. Forty-seven King Street is Lot C1, and it's over two acres of land. It's a buildable lot. And what, but what it does, the big thing that it does, it connects one of our properties, which is seven acres, the Lou Harvey property, to maybe ten or twenty acres of town-owned land, the Conservation Trust land. So it's a gateway property that you really need to connect everything.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote under Article Fifteen, requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Fifteen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. We'll proceed to Article Sixteen, Reorganization of the Zoning Bylaw, consolidation of zoning bylaw from twenty-two articles to twelve. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, requires two-thirds vote for adoption. For the Zoning Bylaw Committee, I'll recognize Tom Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Callahan, Thirty-five Hillside Drive, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee and also Chair of the Planning Board. Tonight, we have seven zoning articles to present to you. It's the next step in our reform of the zoning bylaw. We have voted on a few changes in the last couple of town meetings. This is either the third or the fourth, and we'll have one more go around in the fall to complete the reform of the bylaw. We have been trying to clean up the organizational mess, take a good comprehensive look at it, which hadn't been done in over 30 years. And tonight, these first four articles, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, is to complete the reorganization of the structure of the bylaw itself. This first article, number sixteen, is to consolidate the number of zoning articles we have. The bylaw is organized into articles, and within each article, there are sections. And we have tacked on a number of articles over the years without a lot of thought about their logical order or where they should be. And part of this is to clean that mess up and make a simpler and cleaner and neater bylaw. And back a few years ago, when the bylaw working group, our predecessor committee, started work, we focused on the town of Concord and its model. They have only eight articles, and we like... They have only eight articles, and we like that model, and it's, the new structure is actually to take the articles and make them broad topics, and then have related sections within those articles, rather than having separate standalone articles for everything we come up with. So in the result, in the end result, we are going to go down from 22 articles that we had before to 12. As we sit here tonight, number, Articles 16 and 21 have already been eliminated. They were sunsetted by the, by the terms of the articles themselves. Article 15, which dealt with accessory dwelling units, was consolidated into Article Four as a form of use. Article Four is our uses article. That was done at the last town meeting. Article 13 was an administrative article. It was consolidated into Article One, two town meetings ago. Article 17, which is the transportation overlay district, and Article 22, which is the harbor business overlay district, will be eliminated in the next two articles that are coming up. So for this particular article, we are taking Article 18, which is the village article, consolidating that into Article Four, since it's a form of use. We are taking Article Nine, which is the watershed protection bylaw, Article Ten, the cluster development bylaw, Article Eleven, the land alteration bylaw, and Article 14, the floodplain overlay bylaw, consolidating that into one new Article Nine, which is titled Other Land Use Regulations. Then going to propose taking Article Nineteen, the wind article, and Number Twenty, the solar article, put those into a new Article Ten, which is titled Alternative Energy. And Kevin, I don't know if you can, the first slide has the new table of contents, if you can pull that up. Article Eleven, for tonight's purposes, is going to be reserved. We are planning a article in the fall that will take the place of, become the new Article In doing this tonight, there's absolutely--
Mr. Callahan? My apologies. I'm just, I don't know if anyone else is confused. When you say articles, can you just specify, you're talking about the zoning articles, not warrant articles?
Talking about the bylaw articles, yes. We use the term warrant articles for tonight's purposes, and the zoning bylaw is organized in articles.
Articles, right. So I've been flipping that.
Yeah, I hope I'm not too confused.
Thank you for the question.
Kevin, if you could hit the next page, please. In the handouts, there was an Appendix 1A, which shows you what the new chapters, the new articles and sections will look like with this reorganization. And again, the text of things that are, articles and sections that are being moved around tonight has not been changed at all. This is just simply a reorganization to get to the final organizational structure of the bylaws. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory has met with approval by a vote of eight to zero. Planning Board recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption under Article 16. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 17, Amendments to Article Three, Consolidation of Districts Route 3A. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Requires two-thirds vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize for the zoning bylaw committee, Tom Callahan.
Thank you. All right. So Articles 17, 18, and 19 are all part of the reorganization, and these are all dealing with the consolidation of some of our zoning districts. And the purpose here, again, is for the sake of simplicity and ease of use, is to get rid of districts that we no longer use or never have used and don't really need to be in the bylaw at any point. We broke them up into the three areas for each of these three articles. The first is on 3A. This is a consolidation of the commercial districts on Route 3A. We are actually going back to what we used to have, which was a single commercial district on 3A known as Highway Business. That is the red area. Well, it's actually, the old Highway Business was all of the purple and red area that you see on that map. On the left is the north side of town, north side of 3A closer to the station. On the right is the little part of Highway Business that runs from Beechwood to the Situate Town Line. So our proposal is basically, we'll be eliminating the Technology Business District, which is the large purple area, the Light Industry District, the small purple area, and the Transportation Overlay District, which was targeted for one particular building, the mixed-use building next to the station, where there's the gym, the Greek restaurant, the workplace, and then there's apartments above. Again, this goes back to simplicity. Nothing has been developed of any special, any specialty for the light industry or technology business. Technology Business has yielded us one storage facility that's already built and a new one that just got permitted a week ago. We are going to take all the dimensions and the area requirements and the dimensional requirements of Highway Business and extend it to the entire district, again, as it once was 25, 30 years ago. We are not changing any of the boundaries at all, so this is just affecting the commercial areas on 3A.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Planning Board by a vote of four to zero, and Zoning Board of Appeals by a vote of six to zero. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote under Article 17. Requires two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 18, Amendments to Article Three, Consolidation of Districts Harbor. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize for the zoning bylaw committee, Tom Callahan.
Thank you. All right. So this next step is to consolidate, again, just the commercial districts that are located in the harbor. We have always had, for quite a while, sort of a polyglot of zoning down in the harbor. The intent here is to create, again, a single commercial district for the harbor, again, for the purposes of ease and simplicity of use. So today, what we have, it's hard to maybe see this, but the blue areas on the left side there, the Atlantica site, the former hotel site, and then a little further down where the Lobster Pound and the old boatyard used to be, that is waterfront business. On the Elm Street side of the, on the land side of Elm Street, opposite the hotel site, that was downtown business. And then we border, the sort of brownish area is Residence B. Down by the end of Parker Avenue, that purple area where the private marina is, was zoned light industry. And frankly, I don't recall why that was done, but it was zoned light industry. It's not even used for light industry. It's a marina. So the proposal here is to create a single commercial district called the Harbor District. It would eliminate the one last vestige of downtown business zoning we have, that's down here in the harbor, and it would adopt all of the dimensions and the area requirements and the dimensional requirements of the current waterfront business district. Now, you can't see this too clearly on this, but obviously, the hotel site and then the properties on the land side of Elm Street also are cross-hatched, and that is the Harbor Village Business Overlay District we created a few years ago. That is the district that allows for mixed use, and it allows for the creation of condominiums up and commercial uses below. That district also included the Legion Site. The Legion Site at 88 Summer is actually in Residence B. So a couple of things happening here. This is the one place we are proposing a boundary change. We are proposing that the Legion Site be moved out of Residence B and into this Harbor Commercial District. It is a commercial use. It will make its use conforming rather than non-conforming. The cross-hatched areas of the Business Overlay District, we are proposing for elimination, and that's the elimination of Article 22 of the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw committee didn't come up with any of this on its own. We, of course, were under the direction of the Select Board, and the very conscious policy decision was made to eliminate this district and eliminate the possibility of the expansion of mixed use in the harbor. So the commercial areas in the harbor will remain commercial and not be turned into condos. At the present time, there is still one small building on the land side of Elm Street that's in that district that hasn't been redeveloped. The Legion, of course, has not been redeveloped, and I can tell you, there have been inquiries made to expand the overlay to other portions of the harbor, which have been turned down. So again, that district would disappear. This would all be one single commercial district known as the Harbor District.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Planning Board has recommended approval by a vote of four to zero, and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommends approval by a vote of six to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption under Article 18. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 19, Amendments to Article Three, Consolidation of Districts Village. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. Again, for the zoning bylaw committee, Tom Callahan.
Thank you. All right. So for this article with respect to districts, the various large and small village areas we have in town were once all zoned downtown business. This was the Beechwood area, the West Corner area, the downtown village itself, and then the small area on the land side of Elm Street we just talked about in the harbor. Back in, I believe it was 2007, we eliminated the downtown business, the largest area in the downtown village, and we renamed it the Village Business District in order to allow for mixed use to be built in the village. So downtown business has just existed in Beechwood, in West Corner, and the small area in the harbor we just eliminated. We're proposing that the last vestiges of downtown business in West Corner and Beechwood be eliminated as well, and just turn them into the village zoning similar to what's downtown. The uses are similar, the dimensions are similar. If I could show you the areas, again, these are hard to see, but in West Corner is a very, very small sliver up at the top part of the map, and that's the one on the left. It's the restaurant. It's the antique store that burned down, which has now been turned to residential use by Habitat. And you cross Jerusalem and head towards the tide control structure for Straits Pond and the whole town line. There's a couple of small little shops that used to exist there. We're not changing the boundaries. Again, these properties that are remaining are either in use, or they're very small, being redeveloped, but we would just change these to the existing village zoning, which would allow mixed use in those areas. In Beechwood, we are not proposing the change of boundaries, but in reality, the Beechwood area is where it extends from where Don and Church Street split, and then it crosses over Beechwood Street and heads up towards the stream, going down Don Street as you're heading towards Wampatuck Park. That entire district, even though it is downtown business zoned but for one property, is all in residential use at this time. We didn't want to make this too complicated by proposing changes to the boundaries. We can just leave it as it is. The one commercial property that's there at 538 Beechwood was permitted a year, year and a half ago, for a mixed-use project under the downtown business zoning. So the village zoning would allow for the same thing. So the one commercial project is already undergoing a redevelopment, no matter what we do here. In the future, can we consider maybe shrinking this district and take all the residential properties? Yes, we could, but for right now, we didn't want to make a sea change here. So it's just to change that Beechwood area, which is that dark orange area in the middle, into the village zone.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory approval by a vote of eight to zero. Planning Board approval by a vote of four to zero, and Zoning Board of Appeals approval by a vote of six to zero. Is there discussion? Requires two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 20, Implementation of the MBTA Communities Legislation. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Sir, a second? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. This one does require a majority for adoption. For the zoning bylaw committee, I'll recognize Tom Callahan.
Thank you. So this article is to implement the State MBTA Communities Act. The MBTA Communities Act is now Chapter 40, Section 3A. It's very short compared to some of the other state zoning laws. It's very short. It was passed in 2022. I'm glad our state rep is still here, might explain how and why. It was signed by Governor Baker into law. I think if you keep up with the news about Massachusetts, everybody knows that we do not have enough affordable housing. We do not have enough rental housing, and there's been many efforts to address that. We all are familiar with 40B. There's 40R, 40T, 40S. And this was another effort to increase the available housing stock of multifamily housing in the Commonwealth. And what it says is that in communities where you have an MBTA transit station, or you're adjacent to a community with an MBTA transit station, so this is mostly covering eastern Massachusetts, you have to develop a zoning district where multifamily housing can be allowed as of right. So as of right, meaning it doesn't have to go through a special permit process with the planning board or the zoning board. Now, unlike 40B, which is a one-stop shopping, you know, permitting process with our zoning board, and much of our zoning is thrown out the window to a certain extent, this doesn't change the regular development process. This will still require the applicant for a project to go through all the usual permitting with all the town boards. So for my board, the planning board, we do site plan review for large commercial projects and large projects such as this, it will have to go through site plan review. If they need any extraordinary zoning relief, a relief from a dimensional requirement, they'd have to go to the ZBA for variance. They will have to go to CONCOM for at least a stormwater permit and maybe a wetlands permit. And then the big one is, they will have to go to the Board of Public Health to try to get a septic system put in, or a mini-treatment plant, and have to go to the Sewer Commission. That's going to be the biggest impediment to development in this district, is sewage disposal. So none of those rules are thrown out the window. The other highlight of this is that this does not require the actual building of anything. It just requires us to set zoning in place to allow it to happen. Now, the other differences are the other requirements of the law. It has to be within proximity to a train station or the T station. More than 50% has to be within a half mile of that station, and we've chosen to locate it all fairly close to the Cohasset Station. It requires a density of 15 units per acre, which is far denser than anything we see in Cohasset, the Avalon site, or whatever it's called now. I don't believe approaches half of that destiny, uh, density, but it is a far denser project. It requires that the units be designed for families, so we cannot do anything to restrict the number of bedrooms. So we can expect that projects will have a range from one, two, and three-bedroom units. With 40B, one of the, if anybody was here when the Avalon project was permitted, that at least allowed for negotiation, and there was a negotiation to get all of the units in that place to only be two bedrooms. We won't have that opportunity with this district. The intent of it is to create multifamily dwellings for family use. Now, we have--
Tom, do you want to put the map up on the screen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Kevin, can we put the map up, please? The text before it was describing some of the requirements. As I said, the state act itself is this long. It's the regulations that have come out since, and they've been going through these permutations. And one of the things about the regulations is-- And one of the things about the regulations is it's sort of a one-size-fits-all approach to every town, and that's why when we get to the numbers, you'll see what the potential impact is. But here is the district that we have...
Can we get him a pointer so that we can tell what in fact is being pointed to when you talk? Is there a laser pointer in this room?
Laser pointers don't work with screens like this. I've tried it at...
Sorry about that. Let's just try and keep going and do the best we can.
All right. Well, the district that you see here, the brown areas are the proposed district. So one of the other things we can do is that we can put in our own dimensional requirements, which we've done. So we have a set of rules for setbacks, building height.
Tom, just a time check. You're at five minutes on this one, so...
Yeah, this is going to take a... I apologize, but this one will take a little while.
You could wrap up as quickly as you can.
So we have put in some dimensional requirements. We can encourage mixed use, but we can't mandate it, so the bylaw that we're proposing would encourage it. And the other thing we can do is create this as an overlay district rather than create a new residential district. So what that means is the underlying zoning will remain commercial, and we made the conscious decision to locate this district only in a commercial area on 3A. And so a property owner wants to stay in commercial use, they can stay in commercial use, but with the overlay, it is possible for someone to come in and propose a multifamily project. So we also can impose our inclusionary zoning bylaw, which is our bylaw that requires that for large projects such as this, 10% of the number of units have to be affordable under the state's definition, because 40B is still out there and it still operates, so we have to make sure that anything built here still keeps us in line with our 40B requirements. So when you put this... So the state, in its wisdom, at least provided us with a consultant to help us devise this district. And when you apply all the factors and the dimensional requirements that we wanted, and the 15-unit-per-acre requirement, what you'd get for Cohasset is minimum compliance is 43 acres with the potential times 15 of 638 units. What you see before you is 55 acres, and the reason for that is that on the upper side of 3A, the property, the big brown property to the right, is mostly wetlands. We needed that to connect the district. The district all has to connect with each other. So the marching orders were to do the bare minimum compliance that we could, and that's what we have here. You'll see that includes the transportation-oriented district, the mixed-use building with the gym is to the left on the upper, then there's a big chunk of wetlands, and then across the street, you get to the Hingham Lumber Site, the medical building next door, and then that cul-de-sac you see coming up at the bottom right is Situate Hill. That's recently been permitted for like a office warehouse type of use. That's the land up behind the storage facility. It includes 14 separately assessed parcels, but the Situate Hill are all joined together, so it's actually 11 actual properties. And again, we're doing this with the formula that our consultants have approved and helped devise, that is the minimal compliance we need to do to meet all the requirements of the state. It has gone through a preliminary approval of both the state technical people and the legal people, so we're at least most of the way there. The actual article itself, what it will do is, number one, it'll amend Article 3, which is our districts and map article, to create this overlay district. It's overlaying a commercial district. It will change the map. It will amend Article 4, which is the article on uses, to add a small amount of text to describe what the district is intended to do. It's where we encourage the mixed use, it's where we impose the inclusionary zoning bylaw, and where we just set out the basic parameters of what the bylaw is supposed to do. It also will amend Article 4 to add a supplemental table of what uses will be allowed in the district. Again, we are, since we are encouraging mixed use, we are putting within those uses some commercial uses. And then it will amend Article 5 to add another supplemental table to create the dimensional requirements that we set out for this district. So that said, it's pretty straightforward. I'll take any questions on it, and I don't know if Representative Machina would like to take questions on it, but it's something that we have a deadline of December 31, 24 to do this, and I think we've all done a really excellent job in trying to comply, but also protecting the character of the town as much as we can.
Thank you. The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of four to zero with one abstention. The Advisory Committee recommends approval by a vote of eight to zero. Planning Board recommends approval by a vote of four to zero, and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommends approval by a vote of six to zero. Sir? Sorry. Thank you. Gentleman over here.
Hello. Lance Dial, 21 Rocky Lane. Mr. Callahan, thank you very much for your work on this. It's a very detailed proposal. One question I have, and maybe just we have to swallow this, but if I do the math quickly, 55 acres at 15 units per acre, 825 units. Coming from someone who was involved in the schools, our school system is about 1,200 kids. If we're getting where approximating 800 units that are family units with one child each, we're looking at doubling the size of our schools. So the question is, do we have speed bumps in place to ensure that this is a, if this grows, that it grows in a responsible way, that we can ensure that all the resources that we give our kids, we can continue to do in the future?
Let me first correct. When I mentioned the math, the minimum requirement was 43 acres, 638 units. With the 55, it's like 680 something, 681. And again, the added 12 acres was just there for connectivity. It's wetlands, it's not going to be buildable. Those rules are not thrown out. With respect to schoolchildren, that is one thing we cannot mitigate against by state law. We are intending in the fall to bring forward to you a mitigation, a development impact slash mitigation bylaw like a few other towns have. That's the one that we have the placeholder for the new Article 11. So things like infrastructure, sidewalks, that kind of thing, we will, with that bylaw in place in the fall, we will be able to do that kind of mitigation. We can't for schoolchildren. Perhaps the representative could explain that better than I to our town council, but it is something that we are prohibited from accounting for. It basically could be used as a tool to discriminate against children. And I'll just remind you that when Avalon was first permitted, there were predictions, if my memory serves me correct, that it would generate 76 schoolchildren. From people I know that were on the school committee before you were, it's never gone anywhere close to that. So, but again, Avalon is limited to two-bedroom units, so there was a trade-off. So we will have to deal with that if it happens, and again, if, if, if. Redevelopment here has got a lot of challenges, especially because of waste disposal, and it requires somebody to go in and buy properties at existing market rates, consolidate a few of them, because a lot of these properties are fairly small, tear it all down, and then build new. These are not going to be cheap projects to do if anybody tries to do. I mean, it's one of my questions about the law. It's, they're saying do it around train stations. Well, everybody knows around train stations is already heavy development, so I'm not sure what they were trying to accomplish here. But we're just, we'll have to deal with that as it comes, unfortunately.
Thank you. Sir?
Corey Evans, 313 North Main Street. Tom, thanks for, Mr. Callahan. Thank you for your work on this. I know it's been through a lot of different versions and a lot of long nights. That part of 3A on King Street is already kind of a little bit of a Mad Max movie. It's hard to make, come out of King Street especially. You've got a lot of traffic there going at high speeds. What protections does the town have to require any potential development to contribute to improving that route, especially considering it's a state road?
I will ask Town Council. I don't know that we will have a great deal of influence since it is a state highway to mandate a light. We'd have none. This is another one thing that I don't, you know, with different state agencies may not have spoken to each other. So we considered, by the way, down near the Situate Line, but of course, right over that line, Situate is going to be developing around North Situate Station. Route 3A is under redesign from Beechwood to the Situate Line. It's about 90% done, and all it's going to do is add a middle turning lane. North side of 3A, near our station, is 60-something percent design. It is under a redesign, and anything about traffic lights and traffic controls will have to come in as part of that. And since it's a state highway, we can request, we can ask, we can lobby Joan, but it's not out, it's outside of our control. Again, if we get this impact bylaw passed in the fall, we'll be able to deal with sidewalks and things of that nature, but not the traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Charlie DeSantis, Forest Avenue. My question is, who initiated this concept? The state or Cohasset requesting?
The state. No, this is something that came from the state legislature, and it's state law, so we, you know, in the hierarchy of government, we're at the bottom, so, you know, we have to follow state law here. The legislature has been dealing with all kinds of statutes, 40B being the most well-known, to try to encourage the development of multifamily housing and quote-unquote "affordable" housing. This is just another thing they devised. Again, I personally could question picking train stations because they're already heavily developed, but this is what they've come up with, so...
Okay, what's the choice of the community? We don't want to do it now? We have to comply, or would you like to think it over?
We have to comply.
This is potentially 680, 700 units?
Potentially more. The actual bare minimum number of 638 is the more realistic to think of. Again, the added acreage is wetlands just to connect. We have to, we express that in the number by times 15, and it's 681, but it's not a realistic number because you can't build on those wetlands, so...
Okay. Just seems like a big mouthful for a little town.
Well, again, the state and their regulations has chosen, what I called before, a one-size-fits-all approach.
Mm-hmm.
And the 15 units per acre is far denser than suburbs are used to. The original number in the first permutation of the regs for Cohasset was over 700 units, well over 700 units, so it's at least 638 at this point in 43 acres. But it was worse. There's been pushback on that, and I think as this law gets into place and starts being implemented, perhaps the people at DHCD or whatever it's being called now in the legislature will perhaps rethink this, but right now, that is the law, and then that, these are the regulations that we must comply with.
Do you, sir, do you, let's keep the discussion through. The law is what the law is, as Mr. Callahan has advised.
Okay. Thank you. Just, again, it just seems, my preference would be, let's think this over, delay, and come back another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Recognize a gentleman here and then back there. You, sir?
Were you ahead of me?
Maybe, but I have a quick question. Mr. Callahan, Mark Maggi, Stanton Road. Can you just let everyone know what happens if we don't comply by December 31st of this year?
Some of it is speculation, some of it are actual threats. Right now, the state has sued Milton. Everybody knows about Milton. Milton Town Meeting passed this. Then they had a citizen petition to call a special election, and that defeated it, I think with 51% of the vote. Not a lot. Milton just has red line stations, they don't have a commuter rail station. That was one of their beefs. Milton has already lost a grant. They've lost a seawall grant, granted, they don't have a lot of seawalls. There was a, I will tell you, at the beginning of this process, when we first took this on, there was a sentiment expressed that maybe we shouldn't care because we could lose grant money, and we don't get a lot of grant money, but what the grant money we do is very valuable. The second thing is, I haven't heard this threat lately, but at the very beginning of the process, there was a threat about other state funds, including what's given to our housing authority. And most of our housing authority is funded by the state, not by us. Then there's just the fact that you will lose a lawsuit. Milton will lose badly when they get it. The other towns that haven't passed at a town meeting, and it's just a handful at this point compared, as of last week, it was 70 towns that have passed this. They are being given the opportunity to change their ways at their fall town meeting, but then the hammer will come down. The Attorney General is very aggressive on this. They created a special department, section of the Attorney General's office to enforce this. They just hired the new director for it last week, so I wouldn't expect that this would be pleasant. And it would be completely irresponsible for the Select Board or any other board to recommend to the town to spend money and go into no-win litigation, but that's what we'd be facing. And the grant money, while maybe not a large drop in our budgetary bucket, is still important for where we get grant money, so...
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you. Whitney Halloran, 18 Rustic Drive. So what is, pardon me, what was the time limit on Mr. Callahan? When do we have to approve this by? And could you give us more concretely the financial downside for the town if we go like Milton? Or didn't Marshfield also just not approve this or something?
Yes, Marshfield did just reject it. You can, as...
Okay, so Marshfield, Milton?
If you read the Marshfield forum on Facebook, you can find lots of reasons why. There's a lot of anti-government, anti-Select Board sentiment in Marshfield, too. But Marshfield has been told by the Attorney General they're not getting sued now, but they got to change their ways in the fall.
How much is that going to, what would that financial downside be, you think, for Marshfield or for Cohasset?
I had no idea. Marshfield, just take seawall grants. They have far more seawalls.
We talked about money being denied.
Sir, let's not, we can't have a colloquy here. Would you please ask a question or make a point, and then you can go on, please.
Point is, we have to do this now.
It's grant money and theoretically any other discretionary funds the state gives to this...
I'll go look myself and see what those numbers are. And what's the limit? We have to do this by? What's the date line?
The deadline is December 31 of 2024.
Thank you very much, Mr. Callahan.
And I will, I will say to you right now that if this was postponed to the fall town meeting, nothing would change in this proposal.
Thank you.
This is bare minimum compliance.
Thanks. Back there.
I just wanted to verify that you can vote no. We don't have to vote yes. Oh, sorry, Adrian McCarthy, 85 Doane Street. But you do have a choice to vote yes, yea, or nay. It sounded like at the beginning of this, we don't have that choice, but I'm glad to know that we do have that choice.
Of course you have the choice. As a practical matter, you don't have the choice, but of course you have the choice.
But that's okay, because otherwise, why would we be taking a vote?
Correct. Every citizen in the room can vote how they would like on this proposal. That's absolutely correct. Sir?
Patrick Kennedy, 59 Jerusalem Road Drive. I note that Woodside Cemetery is, abuts the T Station, has a lot of acres. It's owned by the town. The town would never sell the cemetery to developers to redevelop. Would it be legal to include Woodside Cemetery acreage within this district? And if so, was it considered by the committee before making the proposal?
Everything north of the station towards the Hingham Line is pretty wet and wetlands, undevelopable. I can assure you, the state would be looking at how cute towns are getting to try to get around this. When we were considering perhaps splitting this up between the Situate Line and the Cohasset Station, the model for both areas was far more than we needed. But if we took away from this district to concentrate it down in Situate, we'd have probably a less feasible district and would fear rejection by the state. So right now, we just last week, got the technical preapproval from the state. We got the legal preapproval on the bylaw and a text to the bylaw a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, but we just got the technical. They would see through any attempt to make this illusory. And, you know, the sewage disposal is a huge problem. That's going to make a lot of this illusory, but they probably appreciate that, too. They can't make us build sewers where we don't have sewers, so this is, again, they gave us a consultant who looked at everything, you know. First, they took and started to look at residential areas, even though we said, "No, don't go into the residential areas." So everything's been pretty well scrutinized.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum?
Craig McCollum, 8 Rustic Drive. Move the question.
Thank you. We've had a motion to move the question. It's not debatable. Requires two-thirds vote for adoption. This is not a vote on the actual motion. This is just a vote to stop debate. Everybody clear on that? So, on the motion to stop debate, to move the question, does require two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to move the question was adopted. We now move to a vote on the motion under Article 20. This is the vote on the main motion. Does require a majority vote for adoption. We're voting on the main motion under Article 20 now. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion does pass by the requisite majority vote. Go to Article 21, Amendments, Article 7, Parking. May I have a... May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize for the zoning bylaw committee, Mr. Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Article 21 is our amendment of Article 7 of the bylaw, which deals with our parking and off-street loading requirements. This is more in the nature of what we did in the previous town meetings. It's largely housekeeping. The biggest housekeeping change is that if you look at the article today, there is a table that's, has use, and then how many parking spaces you need for that use. We just have changed that table to conform to the new uses table from Article 4 that we passed last fall. So now we have same terminology being used consistently from Article 4 to Article 7. We also added a new Section 7.4, which pretty much just states the obvious about how one accesses a residential property in town. On the substantive side, we took all of the parking space requirements, we pretty much kept as-is, again, not to make this overly complicated. There were a couple of places mostly related to outdoor types of uses that the bylaw said you must just have a sufficient number of spaces. It's sort of wishy-washy. It's never come up as an issue, but Town Council recommended where we could put some actual parking number on it, and we have. And then the most significant change is the parking in the village zoning district. Currently, we have a requirement that for the residential components of a village mixed-use project, there'd be one parking space per unit. In, in the discussion with the Select Board and in a compromise with the Select Board, we are changing that to 1.5 spaces per unit. And that is the same requirement, by the way, for this MBTA overlay project zoning. To give, so, you know, if anybody has been down in the village, sometimes there are parking issues. We can debate whether it's generated by residential uses, but of the projects that the Planning Board has permitted as of late, since my term, in the last three, four years, first of all, none of them are built yet, so they're not generating any cars. But the One Pleasant Street site has, all of its commercial and residential requirements are being met on-site. And the gas station site, which perhaps isn't going to go forward as it was permitted, that actually had 12 units proposed and 18 spaces proposed on-site. So it was already meeting the 1.5 per unit requirement, even though it didn't need to at the time. So we, you know, in the compromise of this, we think the 1.5 is workable. Everything, you know, everything, again, that has been permitted so far for residential use has been on-site, would continue to be on-site. And, you know, the, the demands made by the various commercial uses in the village is a completely different subject. So that's, that's the major substantive change to our parking regs.
Thank you.
The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of 8 to 0. Planning Board has recommended approval by a vote of 4 to 0, and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommends approval by a vote of 6 to 0. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 22, Amendments, Article 5, Dimension Regulations, Creation of Border Zoning in the Village and Harbor. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. For the Zoning Bylaw Committee, again, Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Kevin, could you put up the maps for the village and for the harbor? Have, have those ready? So this, this is a new dimensional requirement that we're proposing. Currently, today, on the 3A commercial districts, where they abut a residential district, there is a setback requirement, a larger setback requirement, to create some buffer between the commercial development and the residential areas. We wanted to do here was bring that same concept to the village and to the harbor. So what is being proposed is what we're calling a border zone. We didn't want to use the term buffer because it's used in other contexts. If you could bring the downtown village up as well as the harbor, let me start with the harbor right there. So at the few places in the village and in the harbor where the commercial districts border a residential district, what this will do is create a border area where the setback is increased by five feet, and the building height, maximum of which is 35, is reduced by seven feet. And what it will do is create sort of a step-back effect of the building as it approaches the residential district. In the harbor, there's only two points where this is still going to happen. One has already been redeveloped. It's where the new hotel project on the land side of Elm Street borders up against residential properties. I think it's number 8179, Elm Street. And you can see that that building is maxed out at its 35-foot height, or perhaps higher, and what the effect is when it's right up against the residential property. So that's the one place where the two districts border each other. The other, since we've included the Legion now in the harbor zone, is where the Legion borders next-door neighbor on Summer Street. If that were to redevelop and this were to apply, you wouldn't have a 35-foot-tall building right up against the residential property. It would be stepped back a little bit. In the village, the points of this are on South Main Street. There are probably three, four, or five points on Ripley Road, Main Street, Brook Street, that where this might come into play. But again, it's to create more of a step-back effect so that the maximum development that's allowed in the commercial areas isn't sitting right on top of a residential area. The, the, the numbers we are proposing are not as great as the ones that apply to 3A and residential. That's because they have much more land to work with. But we think these are appropriate, and we'll just give a sense of scale that will protect the, you know, protect the residential properties from having something very large built right up on top of them, as we see down in the harbor now.
Thank you.
The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of 5 to 0. The Advisory Committee recommends approval by a vote of 8 to 0. Planning Board recommends approval by a vote of 4 to 0, and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommends approval by a vote of 6 to 0. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption under Article 22. All those in favor of the motion under, under Article 22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Thank you. Article 23, the Co-Asset Noise Control Bylaw. May I have a motion in the form submitted to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second?
I mean-
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Does require a majority vote for adoption. For the Select Board, I'll recognize the chair, Mrs. Jean, Ms. Jean Healy-Dipold.
Thank you, Tom, for all of your work, which has been Herculean. And luckily for you, noise is not zoning, so I get to take this on. So Article 23 originated from feedback from residents who had concerns about what they perceived to be excessive noise. And when the town looked into it, we realized that there was no local noise bylaw. There have been complaints throughout the years about excessive noise of various kinds. And so we did receive and research some bylaws of neighboring communities, of other communities within Massachusetts, who do in fact have noise bylaws. There were some that were relatively comprehensive, if not arduous. And so we dialed back to something a little more streamlined, which was Hingham's bylaw that appeared to be a good, workable model. So the Article 23 bylaw, the noise control bylaw, is modeled off of Hingham's bylaw. We have a, a general prohibition, which is also found in state law, but then has specific prohibitions. Some of these highlights include no construction, demolition, or commercial landscaping is permitted in a residential district between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM on the weekdays, or between 7:00 PM and 8:00 AM on the weekends. No domestic power tools by homeowners in a residential district between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM on weekdays, or between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM on the weekends. Here, the board did have some back and forth about the right timing, so to speak. On the board, we have a mix of early birds and, you know, people who want to work when they get home, including on their yard. So we tried to find something that we thought was in the middle and consistent with our neighboring bylaws, too, neighbors' bylaws. We also look carefully at exemptions, which include, for example, exemptions for emergency personnel, licenses and permits from the Select Board, such as entertainment permits, which we do, for example, for the social music circus or events on the common, for snow removal, the caroling and other bells for similar religious services. And then in sum, the penalties for violation range from 100 to 300, depending on whether it's the first, second, or third and subsequent offense.
Thank you. The Advisory Committee recommends approval by a vote of 8 to 0. Is there discussion? Requires a majority. Do you have a question?
Gooding, Lambert Lane. My question is really, the fines, can somebody abuse this and continuously just pay the fine? And what's, what's the ramifications?
So with respect to the fines, here, and I'm just looking at it right now, here, I believe that, again, the fines are laid out with respect to how much for each offense. And I guess the question is, is that the limit right now? Yes, that is. I, you know, I suppose if we find that someone is repeatedly offending, and it's cheaper for them to make the noise and just pay the fine, we can go back and look and see if there's anything we can do to enhance the penalties or fines. But for now, I think we want to start off with what many other towns have adopted and see how it goes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Shang?
Hi, Rick Shae, 52 Margin Street. The first section basically says no person should make or cause to be made any noise And that seems to be very judgmental. And then, that's a defined term, but the defined term is, you know, may disturb or annoy reasonable persons of normal sensitivities. And I, I kind of go both ways on this, because with respect to lawnmowers, leaf blowers, I can stand at my house and turn the phone app toward the leaf blower across the street, and it'll go up to 75, and that's 50 yards away. And so one question, was any consideration with respect to decibels? And there's some towns have gone to defining a noise disturbance as a certain number of decibels above ambient background, which tends to be about 45. And then the second question is, the other times this has come into consideration goes the other way for me. You know, I tend to like music, and if somebody's having a party, playing some outdoor music, live music, I can hear the sailing club, the yacht club, people having a good time over on Basing Beach. You know, is that something that could be defined as a noise disturbance and automatically get shut down? You know, we had the experience, in fact, of having a Saturday evening party about 9 o'clock, you know, what we thought was reasonable noise level, and having a complaint. So, you know, just some questions about how you thought about that.
Thank you.
Sure. So some of the noise you may be hearing may be subject to an entertainment permit and thus would be exempt. Some of it may not. And I do think that the law, the, the noise bylaw contemplates that you can give a warning in lieu. So for example, if there's a lot of noise complaints about a particular party that's going late into the night, and the neighbors call and complain, this affords the police the discretion, as written in the law under the fine section, to give a warning in lieu of a fine, if that's appropriate. And that's what I would expect that the police would do, particularly during the enforcement of this. And so I do think that there, you're right, there is some judgment that will be built in, in terms of the enforcement of the law, which is why the Specific Activities Section is, I think, particularly important, because that's really, these activities are creating the, the biggest issues that have been brought to the board's attention, and I think are routinely felt in other towns with, for example, leaf blowers or, you know, other sources of noise. But at this point, we have not specifically regulated based on the decibel level, which may be easy for some people to prove, so to speak, maybe not for others, depending on where they live or what, what technology they have available to them. But again, you know, this is a initial bylaw that is based on our neighbor's version, and it seems to be working for them. Certainly, if we feel like we need to tweak it or make it more specific, that's something the board can consider.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. Barkley?
Hi, good evening. Mike Barkley, on behalf of the Advisory Committee, we voted unanimously to support this. And, I mean, like any bylaw that we're going to pass here, it's not going to contemplate each and every situation in the future. The way we looked at this is, this is a very common sense way to regulate excess noise. You know, we've all probably experienced it from time to time. In particular, it also gives our police department tools to enforce, you know, these rules, because right now, there are none. And the only real course of action the police have right now is to arrest somebody for disturbing the peace. And that's something that is really overly time-consuming for the police, paperwork, court appearances, et cetera. They don't want to really necessarily arrest somebody and give them potentially a criminal record for making too much noise. And so this is a tool that really allows the police to finally have some very set parameters to go and enforce a complaint if they receive one, which they do receive many, and do it in a way that, you know, the spirit is to, you know, again, levy a fine, and certainly in the event if somebody is, you know, going beyond the third offense and racking up $300 bills, they probably still have the discretion to arrest them for disturbing the peace. But the genesis of this was to, you know, much like what Hingham did 10 years ago when they passed theirs, was to really, you know, give the police the tools to enforce, decriminalize these complaints, define specific times for commercial and construction-related noises. And, you know, again, this is, you know, in our opinion, what it came down to is, this is a very common sense approach to limiting noise disturbances. It, it's not going to be set in stone if we find out along the way that there are things that need to be tweaked. They certainly can be. But in, in particular, you know, the police right now, they really don't have any tools at their disposal to stop somebody from creating excess noise, whether that be commercial or construction. And that's why this is really important, and we supported it unanimously on the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mary Jo Larson, 12 Virginia Lane. You've heard leaf blowers mentioned two or three, maybe four times. And I, I would like to request that in consideration of future adjustments to this particular proposal, that we think about decibels for leaf blowers. I mean, in the autumn here, the noise level is incredible. So if you could consider, you know, a reasonable length of time for people to adjust the equipment they're using, but in the future, I really hope there's something done about that in the autumn. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, on the topic of decibels, when this passed in Hingham 10 years ago, there was a really active discussion around decibels, measuring it. That is not a very precise science. You know, you know, where you measure the decibels, you know, where your starting point is, how far away, it is somewhat arbitrary, and that's why- far away, it is somewhat arbitrary, and that's why in this version, there is no mention of decibels. Again, it's meant to be a common sense approach to limiting noise disturbances that gives our police the tools to enforce it without having to arrest people.
This gentleman stood up.
Sorry. Corey Evans, 313 North Main. Just one question on Section D for dumpsters and trash receptacles. So if I understand this correctly, we, you know, people can't have their trash picked up before 8:00 AM or 7:00 AM? And would this affect how the transfer station works? Because isn't that open before then with dumpsters? Or is that, I didn't see an exemption here for commercial or other areas. I just want to be sure we're not causing a problem unintentionally.
Thank you.
Again, anything permitted by the select board is exempt. And so if we had to do like a formal exemption, we can easily address that. But I don't believe that the RTF is in a residential district, although I need to check with Tom Callahan, our zoning expert.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Under Article 23, it does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion is adopted by the requisite majority vote. Article 24, the citizens petition the plastic water ban. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Does require a majority vote for adoption. I recognize the proponents.
My name is Adam Norman. I live at 88 Doane Street, and I serve as co-chair of the Cohasset Open Space and Recreation Committee. I'm joined by Ginny Leclair from 82 Pond Street. She's formerly served as the Sustainability Coordinator for the towns of Hingham and Cohasset. So tonight, we're asking the citizens of Cohasset to pass a bylaw that would ban the sale of single-use plastic water bottles in town. This would cover plastic stillwater bottles under 1 gallon in size. It would not include soft drinks, sports drinks, seltzer water, or anything else. So why water bottles? Passing this bylaw is going to help reduce plastic waste, mitigate the effects of climate change, and improve the health of our citizens. Importantly, alternatives are readily available, and it's going to save you money. We hope this will encourage our citizens to drink water from reusable containers such as this one, most of which you're already doing. The world has a plastic problem. This probably doesn't come as a surprise to most of you, but our society is addicted to plastic. This chart shows the growth of global plastic production, which has reached 400 million tons annually, and it's projected to rise exponentially. Guess what? Cohasset also has a plastic problem. This picture shows a bin full of plastic bottles, most of them water bottles, taken from Milliken Field. One of our citizens, Melissa Baker, goes to the fields on weekends and fishes the bottles out of the trash receptacle and brings them herself to the transfer station for recycling. We like to think that our plastic gets recycled, but the reality is only about 85% of plastic water bottles, about 85% of plastic water bottles end up as waste. Recycling is great, but it's just not the solution. The life cycle of a plastic water bottle is that it's sourced from petroleum, and extracting it from the earth and producing those bottles emits carbon dioxide. It's heavy, so transporting it creates additional emissions. The water bottle is used and disposed of in a matter of minutes, and then it ends up, some are incinerated, releasing toxic gases, others are recycled, but that recycling process releases additional carbon dioxide. Most of it ends up in landfills, where they release methane and other harmful gas, or else they just pollute our waters, beaches, waterways, road sides, and parks, harming our environment and wildlife. So obviously, all those chemicals released in our environment are bad for our health, but what about the water itself? The water in plastic water bottles contains microplastics and nanoplastics. A study published earlier this year by Columbia University found an average of 240,000 tiny pieces of plastic per liter of popular brands of bottled water. Studies have found that these plastics increase the risk of heart attack and stroke, and dysfunction of the liver and intestine. Manufacturers of plastic water bottles are not required to publish details about the water quality, so there's no easy way for the public to verify their safety. The Cohasset Water Department constantly tests our towns' drinking water, and the test results are available on its website. Cohasset water is clean and safe to drink. Instead of banning disposal of single-use plastic water wells, Open Space and Recreation Committee wants to urge Cohasset's citizens to drink water from reusable containers. Virtually all students and student athletes already carry reusable containers everywhere they go. Cohasset High School and Middle School, Deer Hill and Osgood, all have hydration stations for students to refill their reusable water bottles. You passed two of them on the way in here tonight. Here we have a picture of Ginny's daughter and friend posing for a newly installed hydration station in Milliken Field. CPC has approved funding for a hydration station at Barnes Complex, which you just voted on earlier tonight, and the town's in the process of installing additional hydration stations at Beechwood Park and outside the library. So I want to clear up a couple of what I think are misconceptions about this bylaw. It seems to be that people believe that banning single-use plastic water bottles will deny citizens access to clean water and harm local businesses that sell water. If you still don't want to drink tap water, there are dozens of companies that sell water in aluminum cans or cardboard containers such as these. Businesses within the other Massachusetts communities which have similar bylaws have adapted, and ours will too. Another misconception is that students, or kids would be pushed toward purchasing soda and other sugary drinks if water is not available. So we teamed up with the Green Teams of Cohasset High School and Middle School and conducted a student survey. Only eight out of 80 participants in the survey said they would buy soda if a plastic water bottle was not available for sale. Incidentally, 84% of those students surveyed support this bylaw, and 94% agree that it will help reduce plastic waste. If we pass this bylaw tonight, we'll be joining 25 other Massachusetts communities that have already banned the sale of single-use plastic water bottles, including Hingham earlier this year and the state of Massachusetts last fall. We've got a great deal of support from local organizations who have officially endorsed this bylaw. I know it might seem like a big change to some of you, or that our community is too small for us to make a difference. We live in a coastal community. We passed a plastic bag ban in 2018, so I know that we care about our environment. The average American uses 156 plastic water wells per year. This bylaw could help eliminate more than 1.3 million plastic water wells per year just from our town. It's going to raise awareness about the harmful effects of plastic, encouraging neighboring towns to pass similar bylaws. Thank you for your support.
Is anyone speaking from the select board? Mr. Grady.
I would first like to say I am in complete support of Open Space and Recreation. I'm just not a fan of their methods. Their motives, I think, are pure, but the methods, I don't think are something that I'd agree with.
Speak into the microphone.
Was that better?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right. What I see this proposal as doing is punishing the many for the deeds of the few. I venture to say that everybody in this room drinks water. I do. I'd like to say that everybody drinks plastic water, once in a while out of a small plastic bottle. So do I. But I'd also like to say that I don't litter it, and I'd like to say, venture to say that the majority of this room wouldn't do it either. I think we dispose of them properly, and we take care of our waste. So I don't like seeing that we're forcing kids onto soda, despite the studies. If we stop at the store, I drive with water, I've forgotten it, I stop and get a bottle of water, but I make sure that I dispose of it properly. I just think this is in the wrong direction, and I think that we are, again, penalizing the many for the misdeeds of the misguided few. I do believe in education. I believe in fines. I believe in signage. I would support each and every one of those 110%, but I don't believe in taking the choice out of responsible people's hands.
Thank you. For the advisory committee, Meg Wheeler.
Meg Wheeler, 114 Forest Avenue, on behalf of the advisory committee. We did vote unanimously to support the citizens' petition, and I will simply say this. I would like to tell you that we should support this so that we can be role models for our children, but actually, our children have us beat on this. They are not using plastic water bottles. I have a seven-year-old, and I see all the kids in town, and they are already on top of this, because they understand the impact that this has on our environment, and they also get that this is actually not that big of a change for us. I know it feels hard. I grew up with plastic water bottles too, but this is something we can do. And in my time here as a Cohasset resident, what I have learned is, despite all of our differences, we do support each other. So even if some of us are maybe not quite as ahead as others, this is something we can do to support the entire community, to support our environment, and to be a leading role model for Massachusetts. That slide, 25 towns have already done this. There's a lot more that need this, and especially in our district. As a coastal community, we understand how our environment is changing for the worse. This is something we have to do so that we can have a huge impact, even though we're a very little town, and we have this great opportunity. Thank you.
Whitney Halloran, Restic Drive. Mr. Paul Grady, thank you very much for that, for speaking up on that. Frankly, this is discriminatory. Why would you punish the few of us who don't do these things, who do follow the law, who do throw our trash away? It's discriminatory against plastic bottles that contain other things that our kids drink. I know senior citizens in town that aren't strong enough to carry heavy, heavy bottles of water or other items. 16-ounce bottles are very convenient for those people. City, the citizens in our town are about 20% of the population. I think this is ridiculous. I think this is overhanded, green, go-green craziness. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? I've got the woman back there, and then a Mr. Jenkins, and then the woman here.
So, good evening. Melissa Baker, 18 Blackrock Road. You saw the photo from Mr. Norman of the plastic bottles that I pick up at Milliken Field. That's just one field. Imagine the number of fields that we have in town. Unfortunately, people do not take the bottles home to recycle them. There are 75 to 100 that I take out of the trash can. We have a plastic problem. We need to do better. I urge you to vote in favor.
Leland Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. We have our attorney here. Just because the other towns have gotten rid of bottled water, is it legal? Now, if the town, if the town meeting wanted to say, "We're not going to sell beef in this town," can we vote and say we cannot sell beef in this town? What's the Constitution?
Town council, if you would be able to answer that question, that would be great. Was that your question, Mr. Jenkins?
The other question is, if we're going to ban water bottles, let's ban them all. Everything. Coke, Pepsi, everything that's plastic bottles.
Town council.
Carolyn Murray, Town Council. I can't speak to whether or not you'd be allowed to ban beef, because we haven't seen anything quite that broad. And to be clear, this bylaw is not banning the sale of water in individual containers, as you see some samples here on the podium. But as the slide indicated, and as a number of other communities have adopted similar bylaws to ban the sale of single-purpose plastic bottles, those have all been upheld by the Attorney General as legal.
Thank you. I have the woman right here, please.
Yes, I'm Motivala, 350 AP Twid Street. So I lived in Boston for more than 20 years, and I used to drink out of glass, and I used to add a glass at home, and I'd bring a glass to work, and I always drank out of glass and avoided plastic, because I understand all the dangers around plastic. But then I moved to Cohasset, and I took a sip of the water, and I was like, "Oh, my God, this is disgusting." Like, I just couldn't drink it. And so since then, we've always had bottled water. We always get bottled water. So I'm going to vote, I'm opposed to this, but I would be excited if we could make the water so it was drinkable. Thanks.
Thank you. Sure.
Corey Evans, 313 North Main Street. One thing we've learned in the last couple of years is a lot of the ideas behind plastic recycling just isn't true. And plastic is found in every parts of our body, and it's getting to places that we never knew it could get to. It's dangerous, and we got to get it out of our economy. Think of all the things we have in plastic. Shampoo, takeout containers, sodas. But that photo of Milliken Field, or of the water bottles, reminded me of one kind of thing, which gives me pause, which is of all the things we use plastic for, only one of them is required for health and human life, and that's water. You see trash? I see a bunch of thirsty kids that got hydrated. And I would love to be better about always having a water bottle with me. I am not. I'm sorry. Every once in a while, I have to buy a water bottle. I do know those brands up top. The problem with a lot of those is the price of those are significantly more than a case of water. A case of water is still the best way for a coach, a dad, whatever, to get some water to some thirsty kid. So I want plastic out. I just, I'm worried that right now, maybe we could do other things, and I don't ever think we should make water harder to get or more expensive. I think it's a human right. I think it's safety. So that's why I'm going to say no to that. Sorry.
Thank you. I've got Mrs. Toll, Mr. Pease, and then Mr. Collins, and you would be number four. And I'd ask you to please limit your comments to new points.
Am I next?
Yes, you are.
Patience, so I move the question.
I've recognized these people already. I will let them speak, and then we will proceed to a vote. Mr. Pease, would you like to, okay, he's in favor. Mr. Collins, would you like to speak?
Francis Collins, 404 South Main Street. As many of you know me, I spent most of my life at sea, traveling all over the world. And I have to say that it's very sad when you're several thousand miles at sea and you're surrounded by plastic floating in the water, of all kinds, bottles, flip-flops, polyethylene, I mean, you just name it. It's just astounding how much is out there. And this is, the few, the many responsible people are not responsible for that, but unfortunately, there are a whole lot of irresponsible people, and we have them here in Cohasset just as well as we have them at sea. And it's time to do, now, years ago, in Cohasset here, we had water fountains at all of the public fields, down at the harbor at the floats, you push the button, you get a drink of water, and you walked away. Somehow, we all survived. None of us died of terriest, terrible diseases, and the water was pretty good. So I think that we, there are alternatives to little plastic bottles. We don't need them. There are other ways to make sure that athletes get proper water. And there's also another way to do what the best we can. Apparently, the word "green" is not very happy, very well accepted in some areas, but unfortunately, I think we have to deal with what we have to deal with, and that is to ban these water bottles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Magnus McCann, 104 Doane Street. You can buy water, even if we pass this, in gallon containers. There you go.
Thank you. We did have a motion to move the question. I've recognized the people that had already been recognized before then, so we are now going to move to vote on the motion to move the question. Again, this is not a vote on the underlying article. It would just merely vote whether we stop debate or continue debate. The motion to move the question to stop debate does require a two-thirds vote for adoption. So we'll proceed to a vote on the motion to move the question. All those in favor of the motion to move the question and to stop debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to move the question passed. We will proceed to a voice vote on the article under, motion under Article 24, does require a majority vote for adoption. Please use your voices, so both for and against loudly, so I can make a call ideally. All those in favor for the motion under Article 24, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I'm afraid that's close enough. We're going to do a hand count. So the tellers are going to take their stations. Once they get to their stations, I'm going to ask the people voting in favor to hold up their orange or salmon cards. Not yet, not yet. Save your arms. And then, guys, move to your stations quickly, please. And then, guys, move to your stations quickly, please. Okay. All those in favor, please hold up your orange salmon-colored cards, please. Hold it up high and leave it up there till I tell you to take, you may take it down. Hold on to it because you can do the other one, too. Okay, tellers, write your votes down, and then get back to your stations, please. Tellers, ready? Tellers, ready? Thank you. Okay, nays, please hold up your hands. If you're votes against, please hold the orange salmon-colored card up in your hands, Tellers, got your counts? Yes? Okay. Okay, you're good. Everyone may put your hands down. Okay, the vote is 142 in favor, 37 opposed. It does pass. And we'll proceed to Article 25, citizens petition for the town hall rehab. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a two-thirds vote for adoption. I will recognize the proponent, or speaking on behalf of the proponents, Mr. Ralph Dormitzer.
Ralph Dormitzer, 111 Atlantic Ave. I'm going to cede my position to Peter Longley, who is actually the first name on that petition. And should you need me afterwards, I'd be delighted to speak more on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Peter Longley, 12 Rustic Drive. Mr. Moderator, members of the Select Board, members of the town committees, and my fellow citizens of Cohasset, I stand before you representing the petitioners for this Article 25. The story of what to do with Town Hall goes back for nearly as long as I've lived in town. Various plans were developed and proposed in 2008, 2014, 2018, 2021, '22. None of those solutions that were proposed to the taxpayers were supported by them. The pattern of this has shown that the voters, the taxpayers, are not supportive of large, overly comprehensive, and expensive renovations. So it is understandable that the Select Board, sitting behind me, thought it should try something different. The Select Board suggested in 2023 that rather than refurbish Town Hall, maybe, just maybe, it would be easier to move. But the One Pleasant move that was put forward to the taxpayers last November, the taxpayers again said no. Now, why did they say no? Was it because they just didn't want to pay anymore? Was it because the proposal to buy One Pleasant still left behind the unknown and not insubstantial costs of disposing of the empty 41 Highland? Was it because the parking at One Pleasant was less than adequate? Was it because the space at One Pleasant was 58% smaller than the space at 41 Highland? Or was it because the voters, the citizens of Cohasset, did not want to leave behind their location on the Green, where the seat of our government has existed for more than 300 years? We don't know all the reasons of the individual voters. We just know the vote failed. So here we are. We have a building, our Town Hall, that has been ignored largely for two decades. It has been ignored because of the argument, "Let's not spend any money repairing it because next year or the year after, we're just going to rip out or tear off whatever we install this year. Let's not waste our money." That was the argument for a long time.
So just a time check. You're at two and a half minutes. You've got two and a half minutes left.
More recently, the argument changed to, "Let's not spend any money fixing Town Hall because we are just going to move." The result of these arguments can best be described as creating paralysis. When you have paralysis, you can't move, and if you can't move, nothing gets done, nothing. Now, I am grateful for our earlier vote this evening on Article 8. I'm grateful to the Select Board, and especially the Capitol Budget Committee, for finding the funds to carry out fully the first of the four items in the citizens petition, putting on a new roof. After 37 years, we're getting a new roof, and that is the responsible thing to do. I'm also grateful for another item approved in Article 8, the $45,000 to pay an engineer to provide complete services to prepare drawings and specifications, to be used as bid documents to assist with the permitting and a review of the work during construction for four different items, which are a new sprinkler system in the 1857 portion of Town Hall, associated fire alarm upgrades, design of a new chiller for the air conditioning system to replace the dead one behind the building, and associated electrical work. The scope of these engineering services pertains to the next two items in the citizens petition. Item two, to provide sprinklers in the 1857 wings so that the condemnation order issued last December must be lifted, and the legal occupancy of that wing may be reinstated. And third, to provide for upgrades of the old failed HVAC system so that our Town Hall can be comfortable again, especially for our staff, who need to know that we care about them. So our Select Board and Capitol Budget Committee, and now you, the voters, support these services. But the engineering services you approved in Article 8 are only services. They are not the actual work. The actual work to carry them out remains to be funded. The petitioners feel that we should not wait for these improvements to someday be funded and to someday happen. Our 1857 wing has been condemned. It cannot be used today. The building chiller is dead. It needs to be replaced today. Oh, and the brick front walk should be leveled, which is the fourth and last item on the citizens petition. We, the citizens of Cohasset, we own Town Hall. It needs to be cared for, but repairs cost money, and repairs have to be made so we can use Town Hall. And now our government seems to agree with this point, which is why the Select Board states in the warrant that they, quote, "agree with the spirit and intent of the petition", and that they look forward to working with the petitioner over this summer to develop a responsible, affordable, and comprehensive plan for 41 Highland Avenue. The summer is almost here, and I and my fellow petitioners look forward to working with the Select Board, but we are looking to the Select Board to commit here on this floor tonight to seek to find the funding at the next town meeting to pay for the balance of the repairs listed in Article 25.
So you're at six minutes. Could you please wrap up?
I would like the Select Board to commit to funding repairs of Town Hall so that we can resume using it. And I am prepared to move that Article 25 be indefinitely postponed, with the understanding that the Select Board is going to be moving to carry out the intent and spirit of the petition as they state in the warrant.
Okay, a couple procedural things. First, I need to check my rules. I believe that we can have a motion to indefinitely postpone after the main motion is on the floor. I'm not sure that procedurally has any merit because we can just vote against this. Secondly, you said you would be willing to do that if they support it, but I believe the chair just told you that they oppose it 5-0. So can we continue just debating the motion that was made, which is to fund these four things for $650,000?
Point of order, sir.
If you would like, if people would like to vote against it, they, of course, may. But I guess, I think it would be simpler, since we have the motion on the floor, if we just debate that motion and not have a separate motion for indefinite postponement. Is that okay with you, sir?
Point of order, please.
We have a point of order over here.
Pardon me for interrupting. I believe, I could be wrong, but what Peter is asking the Select Board is not to approve the citizens petition, but will you, and I ask you as well as a petitioner, will you commit to moving forward, working with, to fund as these tests we're going to do are approved in the general funding? That's all he's asking. Will you work in that spirit? Ms. Dipold, you're no longer the chair.
Keep the tone, keep the tone gentler, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't help it. It's, people know me here, I'm a little bit untethered sometimes. But maybe Mr. Grady could answer that question for us. Thank you. Ms. Dipold is no longer chair, I believe, effective in a little while, so maybe Peter will be more appropriate. Paul, thank you.
Ms. Dipold.
Yep, still the chair. So we, thank you. I want to do whatever is procedurally appropriate, Mr. Moderator. So the Select Board's recommendation stands 05, and we're happy to explain to town meeting why, specifically based on the information set forth. I believe advisory and capital have also.
Sorry, you've been asked if you would work with them. I think, do you want to rephrase the question that you asked, Mr. Langley? Just very concisely, so then we can ask Ms. Healy to answer the question you asked.
Yes, I'm asking if the Select Board will agree to work with the petitioners and other parties they wish to involve to find funding at the next town meeting to pay for the balance of the repairs.
Okay, so that was the question. Now, Ms. Healy, if you could provide an answer to that question.
This presumes that the Select Board agrees that the estimates contained in your proposal are both sound and appropriate, and that is a threshold assumption that we cannot agree on for the reasons we will specify. That said, the Select Board is always happy to continue working with the petitioners, as we have been doing, but there's a reason we chose the items to set forth in Article 8 and not the other ones specified within your petition. And so I think it would be appropriate to go through those items to explain our concerns and why, given the costs, which we simply don't see eye to eye on the costs. So we can't simply agree to fund a $5 million project, or whatever the cost ultimately may be, without doing more diligence, which is what Article 8 enables us to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Longley, so you've asked a question. It was answered. We now need to resolve whether you would like to see if we can have the consent of the meeting to withdraw the original motion and go with a motion for indefinite postponement, or do you not want to do that, and we'll continue debate on the motion that was made? We need to resolve that, so please try to give me a very clear answer on that.
First of all, I need to clarify, we're not asking for any specific amount. And secondly, the item approved in Item 8 calls for the preparation of plans, which would be used to generate real costs, so that we're not speculating about costs, but we'll have real costs.
No, sorry, I'm sorry. You did a very good job of asking a specific question. You got the answer that you did. What would you like to do? Are you moving for, would you like to substitute a motion for indefinite postponement for the main motion, or not? Yes or no, please?
I am looking for confirmation from the Select Board that they're willing to work.
I'm afraid, sir, that you got what you got.
I have a question to be clarified.
Wait, please, sir, no. I know this is awkward, and I'm sorry to do this to you and have to make you make a decision, but we need to move the meeting forward, and we need to have the meeting understand what we are discussing. It ends up being pretty close to the same because whether we've moved to indefinite postponement, that's effectively a negative vote. If we debate the motion as originally made, it can be positive or negative, but it's kind of the same thing. But procedurally, we need to know what the meeting is being asked to do.
Let's move to have the vote.
Okay, I think what that means is we're not going to move to indefinitely postpone, so we're back to having a discussion of the motion under Article 25. Sir?
Like a statement and a question. Number one.
Sorry, name and street address, please.
As members of the town meeting, we are the legislative.
Sorry, name and street address, please.
Charlie DeSantis, Forest Ave. You know, we as town meeting members, we are the legislative branch of the town. We fund things. We select, we accept the cost, the price, we go ahead. We don't need the Board of Selectmen to say they're going to work with us or for us or not. We're the legislative branch. If we want this, we vote for it, and they work with us. That's my statement. But my question is, I'm looking at, on the warrant here, you've listed four amounts. Is this the estimate, this is the estimate of what we're looking at as of today? Is that correct?
Those are four allowances, the total of which is $650,000. And the way the item has been written, if one item costs more and another item costs less, they can support each other. The total is $650,000.
Well, it seems a reasonable amount. And we certainly, I mean, I think I speak for a lot of people here. The last thing we want to do in this town is move the Town Hall from 41 Highland Avenue to another spot in the community. Our common with the Town Hall and the churches has served as the seat of government, as someone had said, I think you did, Peter, 300 years. You don't throw that away. We stay where we are, and we make do with what we have. And I think this $650,000 is a great start. And what you've done in the other article, Article 8, fixed the roofs, I think we've done it. If we have to do more, we'll do it later. And I really appreciate the work you've done, and I hope the town keeps the Town Hall where it is. It's a sacrilege to move it. I bet there's not a town in the country that would even conceive of moving its present Town Hall to another site. This is beautiful. It's precious. Let's keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins.
Leonard Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. I'm slightly appalled about the cavalier attitude of the Select Board.
Be gentler with your words, please.
Okay. Four years ago, we were supposed to be fixing the Town Hall. Four and a half years ago, we went out for bid, and instead of going forward with it, what did they do? They withdrew that only one line item in the article, and we've been dealing with flying shingles off of Town Hall ever since, and we don't know how much more damage we have incurred because of their lack of action. And the other thing that really concerns me is the brick sidewalk. I've been talking about this for over two years to people in Town Hall. What's the answer I get? "Oh, we don't notice it. We use the back door." And it looks like it's just a liability case waiting to happen. We have that lip that... it looks like it's just a liability case waiting to happen. We have that lip that people have to be really careful about when they're stepping into the parking lot. And how many elderly people are very nervous that one day, oh, they might just stub their toe. But we're going to just put it off for how many more years?
Thank you. Mr. Dormitzer.
Ralph Dormitzer, 111 Atlantic Ave. Let me just simplify the question. It comes down to if we in fact do a study, which results in the plans and specifications for a sprinkler system, for alarm upgrades, and for a chiller for the failed system in the annex, why wouldn't we, because we've agreed to those things in Article Eight, why would we not fund those things in Article 25? There is a long history, as you have heard, in the town dating back to 2008, of bringing forward proposals, either engineering proposals, architectural proposals, which either are rejected on the floor of the Town Meeting and/or by the voters, or just simply taken off, resulting in no action whatsoever occurring. This is dreadfully simple. Just simply put money against the engineering plans, which in fact you have authorized already. There's nothing very difficult about this. And you can argue about the money, the $650,000, but in fact, you will use the actual numbers based on what is actually coming, will be coming, as a result of the studies you have paid for in Article Eight. This is very simple, and we're just saying, please, fund it now, or ask yourself, why in fact are we not funding it, and why are we delaying funding, when in fact you will have firm numbers and well under $650,000? And I will quote you just one, I know I have very little time. In 2018, EBI reports actually specifically identified the amount of money to do these two major things, the sprinkler and the alarm system. They estimated that at $200,000 in 2018. We have put $650,000 against it. I believe it certainly will cover any contingencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The gentleman in the blue t-shirt, please.
Steve Zoladak, 34 Reservoir Road. The gentleman just summed up a bunch of the points I was going to make, so I'll make mine relatively short. I'm a panel engineer who is a P, which means I sign these sort of, stamp these sort of drawings all the time. The process that we're going through of bringing the engineer on board to do drawings and specifications to get a quote is the correct process. There is no other better process than that. If we do in fact want to save the Town Hall, you need to put money towards the Town Hall. So if we've already put money towards getting the engineer on board to give us the firm cost, it might not be $650,000, but we'll be able to use that 650 towards something. Maybe it's all of it, maybe it's one of the things. The cost is going to change. The cost is what it is. If we're going to do it, we got to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Chair.
Corey Evans, 3-3 North Main Street. I've heard from both the petitioners and the Select Board that there's further discussions to be had, so I'd move that we refer this motion back to the Select Board for further conversation. That's in the chart. One second, and you can still refer it back. We've done that before. That way you guys can figure it out, and we can go home.
Okay, so a motion has been made to refer this to the Select Board. Is there a second for that motion? Okay, so the motion is debatable. So we're now going to debate that motion. If it passes, then that is action on the main article. That's right, isn't it, Town Council? If it doesn't pass, we're going to go back to debating the main motion. Perhaps that's a procedural improvement? So we are now going to debate a motion to refer this to the Selectmen. Do you want to make a statement in support of your motion?
I would support the motion. I am a member of the Capital Budget Committee. I believe that there is significant forward progress to deal with this, and I feel like it's better handled, referred back. And that way the Select Board, Advisory, and Capital Budget can come to the town at special town meeting with the next set of things to do. I think we're on that path right now, so I would support my motion.
Okay, we're now having discussion. So I have not yet recognized the Advisory or the Select Board, so let me recognize them first. I know we're now debating a motion to refer instead of the main motion, but do you have, would you like to speak on the motion to refer? Ellen Maher for the Select Board.
Hi, Ellen Maher, 63 Old Pastor Road, and I'm a member of the Cohasset Select Board. I just wanted to clarify a few comments that Mr. Langley made. The purchase for One Pleasant Street at special town meeting was approved...
Sorry, we are debating now the motion to refer. So if it passes, there will be no committed action taken tonight. It will be referred to the Board of Selectmen for your consideration.
Sorry, Patrick. Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on, sorry, Mr. Kennedy and Mr. DeSantis?
Patrick Kennedy, 59 Jerusalem Road Drive. My sense of this meeting is that a vast majority of the residents of this town want Town Hall to stay where, right where it is on the Common. By voting for this motion, this meeting is directing the Select Board to get to the table, and work with the petitioners, and bring money to fund the necessary projects.
So just to clarify, are you referring to the motion to refer?
Motion to refer is sending this back to the Select Board with the mandate, a directive, in my view, as a sense of this meeting, to work with these petitioners and any other professional that's needed in order to get the work done, to rehabilitate Town Hall, and bring it back on board so that it can be used for its function that it's had for many, many years. So I support this motion, and I recommend that all of Town Meeting support this motion.
Thank you. Mr. DeSantis.
Charlie DeSantis, Forest Ave., again. I'm very much opposed to this. You've been kicking this around for eight, 10 years. Nothing's going to happen. It will be delayed another two years. I think we've got everybody here. I think it's, my sense, the meeting wants to stay where we're at. Voting for, voting not to refer will get us back to the main motion and get this place fixed. Please, please ask that you vote not to refer this motion, but get to the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion to refer? Mr. Brewer, and then did you?
Yeah, I'd say after following this issue of where Town Hall is and the options that make sense, what's fiscally irresponsible?
Sorry, please start with, sorry, excuse me, start with your name and address, please.
Sorry, Clark Brewer, 262 North Main Street. I haven't felt a sense of commitment for pursuing the options that are practical and make sense from the Board of Selectmen, having attended a dozen or more meetings with them. Therefore, I agree with not referring this issue back to the Board of Selectmen. The reason the citizens brought this forward was initially because of having an alternate for One Pleasant Street that was serious, conservative, and basic. But it's, the $1 million with the two articles, it's 40 bucks a square foot compared to the 800 bucks a square foot that we were talking about a couple of years ago. We get basic work done, and this is a practical, simple thing. We've already approved half of it. We just need to approve another 650 so we can get in and use our entire Town Hall, then finish it up later.
Thank you. Recognize this gentleman here.
Chris Plex, 17 Pleasant Street, also a member of the Select Board. So I'm speaking in opposition to the motion, because the right place to work this out is in the budget process. There are practical realities to the funding that's available to the town and the way those funds need to be prioritized. That's in Article Eight. Article 25 is not that. Where this should be discussed and worked out is in the town's annual budget process.
Point of clarification?
No, sorry, sorry. Please sit down. You have not been recognized.
Point of clarification was your recommendation?
Sir, sit down. Sit down, or the constables are going to take you out. Sit down.
I'm just asking for a point of clarification.
No, you'll be recognized. Sit down now, and you may speak when, after these people who have already stood be asked to speak. We proceed in an orderly fashion. Sir?
Thank you. Whitney Halloran, 18 Rustic Drive. I thank everybody. I thank you, thank everybody. Thank the Capital Budget Committee, thank the Select Board. This is what we want. We want to put this back to you, to work with us, no, not us, but work with the majority of the town that would like to find this economical, prudent way to fix it. It's been on the Common, our seat of government, since 1777. It's a bucolic part of this town to have our seat of government there. And you've given us, I'm not criticizing, but we've got three 20 million-plus renovations, massive renovations, the Taj Mahals of the Common. I grew up here. The town doesn't want to spend that kind of money. Gene, you inappropriate said 5 million.
Do not, do not, do not speak to individual people.
Ms. Dipold, I corrected your number.
No, do not speak to individual people.
I apologize. I'm kind of new at this, if you can tell. You can probably tell I'm kind of new at this. But I have a lot of passion for the town. I love this town. And we need to keep that, our government, on the Common. So all, Peter, all we want to do is work with you for that, work with the Select Board on that, any way that they'd like. I'm available to help in any way that I can, to help us come at accurate estimates, to simply do this $3 million proposal we had over three years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan, and then the gentleman here, and then if we have others who want to speak, welcome to it. Sir, Mr. McClellan.
Greg McClellan, 18 Rustic Drive, move to question, Mr. Moderator.
Sorry, I recognize this gentleman first, so.
My apologies for the outburst. I was just asking the Select Board member about your recommendation on this. Was that in regards to the motion to refer back to you or the original motion? It sounded like you were speaking on the original citizen's petition and not on the referral. Because my motion was to refer back to your Board for further discussion.
Consistent with protocol, was it response to your motion, because where I think this needs to be considered is in the annual budget process, not in a referral back to the Select Board? Because there is an annual budget process where we consider revenues and capital priorities.
You may, if you have a clarifying question, please ask it or make it, and then we're going to, we have a motion to move the question, so, Mr. Dormitzer, you don't need to...
That's effectively what my motion is, to give, back to you to go through this normal process. That's, I mean, that's, it refers it to you to figure out what to do with it.
The point has been made, thanks. We've had a motion to move the question. We are moving the question, well, the motion has been made. Mr. Dormitzer, would you mind taking a seat? Thanks. We've had a motion to move the question, which was on the motion to refer. So we're going to vote on whether we stop debate on the motion to refer. If that passes, meaning the motion to stop debate, we're going to then vote on the motion to refer. If that passes, we're done. If it doesn't pass, we go back to debating the main motion. So we have either two votes or three votes in front of us. The first one is just to stop to debate on the motion to refer. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. So all those in favor of the motion to move the question on the motion to refer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion does pass with the requisite two-thirds vote, we will now proceed to a motion, sorry, a vote on the motion to refer. This is the subsidiary motion that was made here. If that passes, the effect of that is that ends the discussion of the main motion, and the matter is referred to the Board of Selectmen. If it doesn't pass, we don't refer, and we go back to discussing the main motion and ultimately have to act on that. So we'll proceed. Everybody good on the process? Any questions?
Sorry?
This is a majority. It may be counterintuitive, but it's a vote to refer requires a majority vote, even though the main motion would require two-thirds. So the vote to refer is a majority. Everybody good? All those in favor of the motion to refer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, that's close enough that we'll do a hand count. Tellers, please take your stations. Again, you don't need to do it yet, but when I ask for a vote, you're going to hold up this pink salmon piece of paper. Again, this is on the motion to refer. Tellers, would you please look at me when you're ready? Excellent. Okay, tellers are at their stations. Vote in favor of the motion to refer. Please hold up your pink or salmon pieces of paper, please. Hold them up high. Keep them up. Tellers, all good? Votes written down? Okay, you may take, put your hands down. All those against the motion to refer, please hold up your pink or salmon colored cards, please. Thank you. Phil and Debbie, you guys good? Okay, everyone's good. You can put your hands Okay, the vote on the motion to refer is 69 in favor, 86 opposed, so the motion to refer is defeated. That brings us back to debating the original main motion. Is there further discussion of the original main motion? The count was 69 in favor, 86 opposed. Sorry. Gene Maher for the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Sorry about the misstep before. I just wanted to let everybody know, we all know a Town Hall has been a divisive topic in town. I don't, I won't regurgitate all of the history and everything that's been done. And I want the Town Meeting floor to understand that we received the motion that's in your packets, that was presented on Thursday, and then a new motion, I'm sorry, we received the motion on Thursday, and then a new motion was presented that's in your packets on Friday. So the Town, the Select Board, the Advisory Committee, and the Capital Budget Committee has not had time to review the motion and have true deliberative commentary on it until this evening, right before Town Meeting, and we had already posted for 6:30. So we didn't, we didn't have a lot of time. It's kind of disappointing that we've been working with a group of stakeholders, including the lead petitioner, in an informal way on a working group to develop a comprehensive and collaborative repair plan for 41 Highland Ave. With our goal, our common goal is to facilitate a reasonable repair solution for 41 Highland Avenue. Avenue, and that hasn't been mentioned by any of the petitioners. The motion lacks due diligence. It lacks visibility and vetting, which is needed for public procurement. For example, for the chiller, it's highlighted at $100,000, and we've received a preliminary, preliminary quote at $185,000. Motion also says to take it from the general fund. Well, Article 4 tonight that you all passed, balance the budget, and to take $650,000 from the general fund would require redoing the entire budget, which might mean cuts, might mean cuts, police, fire, schools, facilities. Speaking of facilities, $650,000 is about half of the amount of the entire Town facility budget. So it's not a small sum of money when it comes to the facilities. We're also unsure how $88,000 has been calculated for the MAAB upgrades, when in Article 8 we have voted on the money for the study to determine what those needs are, and the study itself is $20,000. It's kind of difficult to imagine that the upgrades resulting from that study could only be $88,000. And again, those aren't vetted, and they're not put through the public procurement process. So there are further discrepancies, and that's why we're concerned about the numbers that are in the original warrant article and the numbers that are in your motion, that they haven't gone through the proper process. And I'd like to reiterate that some months ago, we began working with the lead petitioner and other interested members in the community to do a repair plan for 41 Highland Avenue. Okay, we're not looking to tear it down, we're not looking to move, okay? And it's important that we maintain 41 Highland Avenue, and that's our plan. So finally, the motion articulates, oh, the funding is to come from the general fund, and we feel that that's a mistake. We need a better sourced...
Just to clarify, I believe this motion provides for funding as borrowing. That's right, isn't it, Mr. Dormitzer?
That's correct.
So it's not correct.
It says general fund.
And it, no, it does not. It says borrowing.
It says borrowing.
Anyway, do you, if you, you're coming up on three minutes. Can you wrap up?
Okay, well, borrowing. Who says $650,000 is the right amount of money? We continue and we pledge to work with those who are interested in preserving and repairing Town Hall and getting the right numbers before you so that we do it the right way the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Advisory Committee. And then I've got Mr. Dormitzer and Mr. Brewer.
Mark Cameron, on behalf of the Advisory Committee, we voted 8-0 not to recommend Article 25. It is not a clear and cohesive plan that has a path forward. It is a fragmented approach to handle it compartmentalized. It does not address the majority of the issues at Town Hall. It would result in a significant amount of rework over the years. There is no clear path as to how long and how much this plan would take by the citizen's petitioners. This is just one step of many. This could be, this bleeding could go on for years until the project is complete. The citizen's petitioners have not provided that clear path forward. They have not fully included all of the work needed, such as hazardous materials removal. And currently, there's conversations with a cultural group to turn the historic portion into a cultural center. And I think we owe that group the time to let that conversation marinate and evolve before we start making decisions that will frankly make that harder to undo. So I think at this point, the best thing we can do is take the opportunity to invest a little bit of money into the building, as we're doing with the roof, and let the conversations continue, knowing that we're making steps to resolving 41 Highland Ave.
I'd recognize Mr. Dormitzer, and then I have Mr. Brewer, and I see that Mr. Host would like to speak.
I'd just like to make a couple of points, which I think are important. Number one is you're voting whether or not you want to have money allocated to do the repairs. It's a simple question. The second is, are you willing to spend $650,000 by borrowing to do that? And let me reiterate, when I say by borrowing, it does not take anything from the general fund. In generally, borrowing is assigned to the Capital Stabilization Fund, which is also funded through free cash. There are no negative downsides, almost none, but there are many, many things people can say to actually make it difficult to actually execute this simple plan. If the, if the actual plans and specifications, which are authorized in Article 8, and I hate to repeat it, are, are specific, the $650,000 will be split up appropriately among the exact numbers that are determined as a result of those plans, specifications, bids. There's no particular reason not to do this. It's, and in fact, if it exceeds $650,000, obviously, the Town Meeting would not have a, will not allow the town to spend the money. So you have lost nothing by authorizing it. It requires a two-thirds vote, so a lot of you have to say yes. I hope you will say yes. It seems to me the sentiment in this town is clear. We should restore, repair, and fix our Town Hall, and stop trying to find better solutions which never have worked since 2008. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer?
Yes, just to build on, Clark Brewer, 262 North Main Street, to build on what Ralph has said, we've already authorized the engineering work for sprinklers and a chiller replacement. This is, this is work that is required to get full use of our building. In addition, we've had trouble spending money on our Town Hall. We've had trouble getting a scope of work that fits the consensus here at Town Meeting over 15 years. And we will likely get better, more committed subcontractors and contractors to bid on our work if they know we've allocated the resources to actually do it. There are many good contractors that putting together bids and estimates takes a lot of time. They don't want to do it if they're wasting their time. I'm a registered architect, Pete's a registered architect. We put together a repair scope of work that's basic, simple, practical, the minimum, if you will, to keep Town Hall going and to make it as good as it can be within a reasonable context. So I'd ask everyone to vote for this citizen's petition.
Thank you. I'd recognize next, Mr. Host.
I, Brian Host, 29 Heather Drive, speaking on behalf of the Capitol Budget Committee. So our committee voted shortly before this meeting. There were one in favor, three against, and one abstention, who was a signatory on the petition itself. I think the division that you're hearing obfuscates the fact that there's actually a lot of consensus in the room as well. And there was a lot of consensus on our committee. There is complete support for the spirit of what the petitioners are trying to do here, which is advance repairs that are needed. I don't think there's really anyone in the room that would argue that these repairs aren't going to be needed. And I think that there's support that's evidenced from the last annual Town Meeting, where we voted $500,000 to start this process. We very deliberately prioritized the roof and the studies because those are the first things that need to be done. There's no debate that we're going to require more funding. When this came in front of Capitol Budget a month ago, after discussing this many times, the question came to me, why wouldn't you approve this? The most simple answer was, it didn't specify a source of funding, and that is, in fact, what you see in the warrant. It's the most basic fundamental requirement of a Capitol Budget request in order for us to be able to say yes. We received the motions, and now it specifies debt. Capitol Budget, first of all, let me just say, the idea that we're just going to immediately flip to debt is not something you'd conclude if you've been watching Capitol Budget over the past 10 years. We have been working on extraordinarily limited resources, a result of past borrowings, which eat into, in fact, take the very first call on every year, our appropriation. This year, we get 1.9 million, sorry, 2.1 million, $550,000 right off the top for borrowings for the past. That reduces our ability to spend this year to 1.5, okay? So we're very averse to borrowings. We are two years away from paying down all of our historical debts, okay, which is going to give us incremental capacity to frankly just write a check for something like this. We wouldn't have, be having this debate if we didn't have past debt that we were carrying right now. We would just write a check for this out of cash. So we only take on debt when there's no other way to fund something. And in this case, these items are not going to be executed on this summer. Let me be completely clear, we can prepare for them, but we're not going to be writing checks. And there is another way to fund this, which is free cash at Special Town Meeting, just like we did last fall with 500,000. That's, from Capitol Budget's perspective, the majority of the people saw it that way. Not everyone sees it that way, and that's why you see a split vote. But there is a very simple way to fund this through free cash at Annual Town Meeting that does not require us to burden ourselves with debt. It's going to chew into our ability to fund other initiatives for years to come. The other thing I would tell you is that there's a possibility, maybe, I don't want to speak out of school, some of this might be of interest to CPC. I'm not going to speak for them, but we haven't run that trap. If that funding's available, we shouldn't be borrowing it as a town. I think, I'll leave my comments there, there are other ways to do this at Special Town Meeting, and that's what's reflected in Capitol Budget's vote.
Okay, I think I'd recognize...
Call the question?
The question has been called. It's not debatable. There's been plenty of debate, so I will view that as an appropriate motion. All right, George, you, Mr. McGoldrick was standing, so, all right, Mr. McGoldrick can speak, and they were calling the question.
George McGoldrick, 107 Border Street. I agree that everyone wants to get this resolved. It's been years and years. We've had approval at Town Meeting. We've had misinformation that's led to it, losing at the voting booth by less than 12 votes. But I have a history of development, and the last thing you want to do when you take on a project that needs a lot of work, and again, this building has been budgeted at 8 million, 12 million, 16 million, 21 million, and 29 million dollars. The building obviously needs a lot of work. The last thing you want to do is put a Band-Aid on it now, without knowing what your full program is going to be. Because we may approve $650,000 for these items, and in a short timeframe, come up with a plan for the building that basically makes all this money worthless because we've done something different. Is there, is there a committee, as has been in the past, that is studying this? Or do we have a piecemeal group of individuals who have the right intention, but they're not looking at the full picture? You need to look at the whole house before you fix parts of it. Thank you.
Thank you. This gentleman was standing when the motion to call the question was made, so I'll let you speak quickly, sir, without, without emotion, please.
Thank you very much. Whitney, 18 Rustic Tribe. Money, 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 money. So how are we going to pay in 2018, 2021, 2022, 2023? How are we supposed to pay all those monies? All that money, over 20, 26 million dollars? I didn't hear a lot of crying about that at those meetings then that we were here doing. $650,000 to get the ball rolling, to save our Town Hall. No one knows how much it's going to cost. We think three or four or five million if we do the hard work. If we can work with the Select Board and do the hard work of getting at these bids. Otherwise, I rhetorically ask, how are we going to supposed to pay for all those other multi-20-plus-million-dollar projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've had a motion to call the question. It's not debatable by now. We're all familiar with that. We're voting on whether we're going to stop debate. We're not voting on the main motion. All those in, it does require two-thirds vote to stop debate. All those in favor of the motion to call the question and stop debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Okay, the motion does pass with the requisite two-thirds vote. Now we're proceeding to the main motion, a motion which does also require a two-thirds vote. So I will call first for the votes in favor, then, of course, for the votes against. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
That clearly does not have two-thirds of the vote, so the motion is defeated. That concludes the business in the warrant. Thank you much for your consideration and the respect you've shown, and in moving quickly through the evening, may I have a motion to dissolve? Thank you, may I have a motion, a second of the motion to dissolve? All those in favor of dissolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Thank you. The meeting is dissolved. Have a good evening.